On behalf of the Foxborough School Committee and the school administration, I would like to offer our deepest and sorrowful condolences to anyone who has been touched by the events of the past week. We recognize that the entire community of Newtown, Connecticut will be affected by this senseless horrific act for years to come. We will keep anyone who is suffering in our thoughts and prayers.
Also, as a school committee and school department, we also want to tell the parents in the community that we appreciate all the support we've received over the weekend from Foxborough parents and the community, and we want you to know that everything went smoothly at our schools today. We're taking our cues from the children in terms of answering their questions or discussing the recent events. Teachers and staff will continue to support those who need it. If parents feel the need, please reach out to our school counseling staff for additional assistance. Be assured that we are continuing to review our school safety plans with the Foxborough Police Department, our school administrators, and all of our staff, and we'll continue to work with parents and families to address any of their concerns. Our teachers, administrators, staff, and the students did a wonderful job today. The staff reassured students at school as a safe place and that they are there to listen to them. Few extra hugs didn't hurt either. What happened in Newtown, Connecticut, is truly chilling. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the children, families, and staff in Newtown, Connecticut. These are the things that frighten us the most: incomprehensible, unexpected, unpredictable events, far outside the norm of what we could possibly anticipate. As adults, even we don't have the answers to some of the difficult questions that our children are asking. So in this holiday season, the tragedy in Newtown was a most painful reminder that life is really so very precious. Thank you to everyone who's been of help. Thanks to great students. We really did have a great day today with, for the most part, students engaging in their normal learning activities and happy to be in school. So thank you.
All right. Our agenda tonight will be visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, proposed 2013-2014 FHS programs of studies, food services update on recent federal regulation changes, revised district report card, preliminary discussion of proposed FY14 budget, then a school committee vote to authorize the use of the high school renovation funds and building rental revolving account funds for the construction of the turf field and the relocation of the softball and baseball fields. School committee vote on subcommittee appointments for teachers' negotiations, educational assistance negotiations, other matters, and then adjournment. Do we have any visitors? Okay, approval of minutes. We postponed the November 5 approval of minutes because Bruce and Tina were not here. In case you had any additions or corrections you wanted to make.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. I actually, just to facilitate this and keep it moving forward, perhaps if we know we are going to be unable to attend a meeting, if we have corrections, we can call Wendy and it could be from now on, and then it would just make everything move as fast as possible. The minutes of November 19. Any additions or corrections?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have one. Just on page three. It's like a typo. Respectfully submitted, written twice, my name should be above the secretary. That's all.
It's a typo. It's a typo.
Just wanted to see if you'd know.
See, I do read them, Martha. Some of these things are right. I think for Wendy, this was a little bit of a trick for us. Yes. Did we pass Wendy?
You did.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended. Okay. All in favor?
I wasn't here as well.
Wasn't here.
To abstain.
Three, zero, two. All right, next is the joint meeting of the Boards of Selective and Advisory Committee. Any additions or corrections?
Actually, I do, but I don't, is it appropriate that I do? I just want to add.
If something is not correct here, yes.
Dr. Burros, our Assistant Superintendent, was there as well.
Oh, add Dr. Burros. That's easy. Snapper, Dr. Burros.
Motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Abstain. Three, zero, two. Administer the IGO Administration Building Superintendent's Office for the Budget Subcommittee Meeting. Any additions or subtractions? Corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay.
And we're both in favor.
And you're both in favor. Awesome. You're making my life easy.
I know.
All right, I'll come more often. All right. To the school committee members from Ms. Benelli.
Yes, Madam Chair, we actually have two high school students coming as part of the teaching and learning highlight, and I don't see them yet in the audience, so I see one. We're waiting for one more, correct?
We could.
Okay. Could we just go a little bit, you know, the items one out of order, maybe?
Certainly.
Because we don't want to, we love to hear from students, so we want to make sure that we provide both the opportunity to participate.
Absolutely. All right, proposed 2013-14 FHS program of studies. Miss Spat.
Well, good evening to everybody. And if I do not see you, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year, as it's coming fast and furious, that's for sure. In your packet, you do have our proposed additions to courses for the coming school year, and Patty Young from our Special Education Department is here to talk a little bit about the transition class that we are going to be putting into place. So I'm going to turn it over to Patty for this.
Okay, the description that we have going into the program of studies says that this course is designed to provide an opportunity for students to develop the skills they need for life outside of the high school in areas of further education, vocational training, employment, and community experiences. The topics that we'll cover will be determined by transition assessments, and student work will be compiled into a resource binder that the students will take with them when they graduate. The content areas will include personal finance, community participation, personal health and wellness, self-determination, self-advocacy, independent living skills, recreation and leisure skills, employment, and post-secondary education. This is a course that will be open to special education students, and it will, the enrollment will be determined through the team meeting process. We foresee this for juniors and seniors, and we're planning to have it meet three times a cycle over the course of one semester. The rationale behind this is that, let me give you a little bit of background about transition. Transition services are a coordinated set of activities that are designed as a results-oriented process focused on improving the academic and functional achievement, which will promote movement from school to post-school activities, including post-secondary education, vocational training, integrated employment, continuing and adult education, adult services, independent living, and community participation. This plan should be built on students' preferences and interests. And usually, when I hold a first IEP meeting with a ninth grader present, I talk to them about the idea that as soon as they walk in the door of the high school, we're working on getting them out the door on the other end, and we do start this process right away. Beginning at the age of 14, IDEA 2004 requires a student's IEP to include a statement of the transition service needs of the child under the applicable components of the IEP. This statement should focus on the child's course of study and include a statement of any inter-agency responsibilities and linkages that will be needed when the student graduates or leaves at the age of 22. The team determines what the transition activities will be. IDEA 2004 requires the student be invited to the team meeting regardless of age if one purpose of the meeting is to discuss the transition service needs. If a student chooses not to attend the meeting, the district must ensure the student's preferences and interests are considered. And sometimes, you know, we do have students, younger students, who are not necessarily comfortable attending a meeting. We do have to meet with them, the liaisons, and talk about what their needs, what their interests are, what do they like to do, what might they think they'd like to study at the end of school. At Foxborough High School, transition services are currently provided in a variety of ways: through regular education course offerings such as Introduction to Foods and Personal Finance, college prep or honors-level academics, through group guidance, through career exploration field trips, the credit fair for life, volunteer work outside of school, part-time employment, and through individualized conferencing with liaisons. We are proposing this course in order to provide necessary transition services in a more structured manner for small groups of students who require specialized instruction. This model has worked well for group guidance through the freshman, sophomore, junior, senior years, and so we're looking at that, a similar type model. We foresee it working well for our students as well. Any questions?
Yes.
So were we doing this but on a more informal basis prior to the structuring of the formal offering?
Definitely on an informal basis, perhaps through some academic lab time, a liaison working one-to-one with a student. We think it would be beneficial to have them working in some small groups, better use of their time and...
I applaud all the offerings that you described, and I can only imagine that putting in a structured program or structured course offering makes a lot of sense.
How many students do you anticipate will be realizing this?
I'm hoping to keep groups small, perhaps about a dozen students. I don't foresee all of the students as on IEP as juniors or seniors electing to take this, so many of them have so many varied interests. But I think it would be fair to say if a dozen of each grade level did this, it would be, you know, a good service for them.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks.
Page one of the packet that was presented to you, there are not two new courses in the math department, but two levels being added. One of the levels that we did not have was in Algebra I honors and with the students that are coming from the middle school. It has been noted that an honors level was necessary, so we're going to be adding that honors level next year. And the Algebra II B, we do have an Algebra II, it's a one and a two, in that Algebra II year that is over two years for students who need the algebra at a little bit slower pace. And again, this is the Algebra II, so this is the upper level class. But it's also recognized that by the state, the state does not recognize the Algebra II being broken into two years as two years of math. They only view it as one year of math. So the Algebra II B is a little bit faster-paced, and we'll give all of the concepts necessary, everything that is there for a student that does need to have this particular course. So it is a modification that's being made, and it's that recognition. So it's just the levels. This is not another course at all. Turning over to the science, the science department's very excited to...
Do you want to take just questions? Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Are there any on that?
I just had a question about, okay, so is this considered a college prep course?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
The B kind of threw me.
Yes, both of them are.
Okay.
It's just another way to denote which of the Algebra Twos this happens to be.
Okay, thank you.
And Diana, just before you leave the math.
Sure.
So we didn't have an Algebra I honors course, obviously, prior to this, but you're saying, you said based on students coming from the middle school.
Yes.
So this, to me, sounds like a nice addition to our curriculum.
Things are changing in math because of the Common Core.
And I was just going to say that, that there's so much, just in general, in the curriculum that is really fluid, and as the math is under review for this year as well, with the Common Core coming into this, with what we've looked at with NIASC, you're going to probably be seeing changes over the next couple of years, that we will be making changes with new courses and changes across courses. And the math department will be presenting, actually, through the middle school, through the high school, what those changes are, because what's being called Algebra I at the high school level of the Common Core is really Algebra I plus some of the Algebra II concepts that are being tied into that. So it's a new look that's going to happen, and for those of us when we think Algebra I, because it was our Algebra I, it is no longer our Algebra I. It does have a different look, and that will be presented.
We're trying to figure out, Amy's heading up the math review this year along with Allison Mello in St. Carl from the high school. But we were actually discussing last week, it's all algebra, but how do we denote? We can't call it old and new, because then you react to the old days where it's like new math. So we're, I don't know, we need to call it like math that algebra as you know it, algebra under the National Common Core. I don't know. We're trying to figure it out. Um... And all schools are facing this challenge, right? The entire country. Yeah, right. Right. At least 46 states. That's true. Forty-two states and just, the others have opted out, believe it or not, and, you know, we just don't want to be living in that state.
How come they opt out?
It was an opt-in.
Really?
Yes, because it's common core state standards, it's not a national curriculum, it's...
There were, and plus, there were a few states that chose not to participate in Race to the Top as an entire state.
Oh, all right.
So if you didn't, then you have that, we don't, mostly states don't have the option to opt out, but if you, if you sort of decided to completely opt out in the whole national, you know, push for Race to the Top, then you weren't going to be held accountable for some other things. So, but, you know, they're already outlier states, so something is going to happen, something will be imposed on them, and so, interesting to see.
It's all very interesting to watch.
Yes, it is. Let's take you to the latest bulletin.
Within the science department, again, right along the line of rigor and trying to meet the needs of as many students as we possibly can, it is that next step of adding an additional AP course. We do have the AP Bio and the AP Chem, so this will be adding the AP Physics in as well.
Oh, boy.
And at some point down the road, we may well be looking at an AP Environmental, too, so.
Oh, my.
But this year, but it is something that the science department is talking about.
I think this is a great addition to our AP.
Yes. And I think in many ways, you know, the sciences are, I always call them a unique language unto themselves, and Bio is very different from chemistry, is very different from physics, and there are those students with their strengths in each of those different areas or have a love of each of those areas, so to be able to offer a course for those students who really are of that mindset with the physics, I think is just such a plus for the department and for all of our students as well. Is there one of you signing up next year?
No pressure.
No pressure. And within the social studies department, another addition is the AP Psychology, and so, again, taking our psych courses that we currently have, giving another offering, again, to our students. In both of these instances, our students will be, it is a requirement that students will take that exam at the end of the course. Personally, I think that that's very important. I think it's, you know, an honor and a tribute to the teacher and to the individual themselves to be taking that exam, to see how they measure, and again, after all that year of hard work, both on the teacher and instructor's part as well as the student's part, and that is a requirement that goes into both of these as well. And another course that we're hoping is going to go through, this was a course that was applied for by Mr. Jim Callahan in the Social Studies Department through a Faces grant, and we don't know yet if this is something that's going to come to fruition, but we are hoping that this will be a boost for this course to actually be able to begin again, and I do say begin again, because we used to have a video course, actually, a couple of different courses that ran, and with teacher retirements and other things along the way, those courses have ended. And so it's now our hope that we're going to be able to bring these back again at that next level with new equipment that we would be able to use for this. So what Mr. Callahan has proposed here is that there's an intro course and the video/audio production one, and we do know that, you know, it's been, it's very alive at the middle school, and for our students to be able to continue along. The intro is there for any student who would like to come into it, who hasn't, who does not have a background, but also, too, I think for Mr. Callahan to also have a feel of where the students are coming from and what their skill levels are at. And then the video one production, you have to have the other as the prerequisite, that may well change depending upon what the students are coming with from the middle school. He also has a video two and a video three course. We didn't add those because right now, we're really, at this point for next year, looking for that one and two, they're both semester courses, so a student could take the one course in the one semester and then roll right into the other course in the other semester. So that's why we put them both in. Next year, we would, if this does fly for next year, the following year after that, what are we up to, 14, 15, then we would be adding the next two courses in the series for this. And the Social Studies Department is very much behind him doing this, and a lot of people within the department are very excited about it as well.
Diana, is there a video club as an extracurricular activity now at the high school?
No.
Everything dropped.
Well, we don't have modern equipment anymore.
Right.
So I know my son took that course in high school, and it was very popular.
Absolutely was.
I think one of his favorite memories from high school. So I think that, you know, I think it's fair to say we'd like approval for these new courses, assuming that if, contingent upon support from the Faces group, which you'll be hearing about beginning in January, the first meeting, and we're waiting for, you know, written confirmation of what their final decisions were as to which teacher grants they wanted to support this year. But with that support, we feel we would be able to offer this course, but it is contingent upon that, I want to be upfront and honest about that.
But this is very exciting because it's so apropos, I mean, Mike Weber, because of these...
That's right.
Mike Weber is running Cable Access. Because of this kind of thing, Russell Hardin...
Absolutely.
...is in Hollywood writing trailers for all the new movies coming out.
And, you know, Foxborough Cable Access, also, we've been talking to them a couple of years, and if we can get this course running, we know there'll be a lot of support from them, so that'll be another great partnership. Do you remember Mrs. Pedroli? She used to teach.
Of course.
So when she retired, the equipment was starting to, let's just say...
Fade a little bit.
Fade a little, anyway, and then without anybody stepping forward.
Becoming a little tired.
Yes, that's right.
In some cases, we could probably start our own, maybe, museum of some of the equipment that we have.
We could. We have some definite archaeological...
Yes. But we do have a studio upstairs that, you know, could be, again, transformed with the computers that we would need and all, it could just, it could fly, and so we're very excited about the possibility.
Diana, so both courses are dependent on the Faces grant, right?
Yes.
What I love about this, too, is the fact that you have the CP and the honors opportunity for students. I just think that that's really important, and I mean, again, it's so innovative, I think, of our courses, that we have the opportunities for students to be challenged, for them to challenge themselves more if they want to do the honors, if not, they can do the CP. So I hope, I hope this comes to fruition.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
A detailed question. The Faces grant would be to supply the new equipment that is needed, but the salary part of the position is already figured out.
Yes, that's just a reallocation of which teachers will be teaching which courses.
All right, just wanted to double check. So it's not dependent on a fourth coming after this year?
No. And it's not, and it's not dependent on any increase in staff either? There's no...
It's just a reassignment of class.
And remember, it's two courses, but they're each a semester, so...
Right.
It's one semester one and the second semester two, so it's just one person, one period.
Do you need a motion to accept?
You do approve new courses at the high school, so there should be a motion to approve the program of studies proposal from Mrs. Myers.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Happily.
Four.
Well, excited.
Me, too.
Thank you.
It's great, Diana.
Thank you very much.
When do we find out about the Faces? I don't remember the timeline.
Well, I know before the holiday break, they will confirm with me. I have spoken to them, but they will confirm with me before the holiday break, and they're actually going to come to our first meeting in January, and that's when you'll have the confirmation. So we kind of need it to be a two-step thing, so if we can approve the course and they know it's going to happen, I think, then it's easier for them to confirm as well, because that's a lot of support. The course hasn't been approved yet, so we decided to go ahead with the course approval first, which gives more impetus to support.
As I was going to say, too, if the Faces grant for some reason didn't come through, it'd be interesting to revisit this and see how creative we can get.
I totally agree.
Do we have any idea how much the amount was from the Faces?
I do, but why don't we just wait?
We'd be happy to update you in January. All right, I'm still waiting for a student.
I'm thinking that she's not here yet, that she's not...
Good, then all spotlight on you, hon. All right, would you come up to our visitors' table, then? So while you're getting ready, and Mrs. Myers, luckily, you don't have to go too far, you might have something to add, as you know, I guess it's fair to say, just, I don't know how much our student number, I know Janelle knows, that this school committee has been so solidly behind the robust development of our wellness curriculum and wellness programs over the past five years that I've been back here, and that is unusual. So I want to start by saying thank you, because every time we talked about wellness at the committee level at the school department, you never wavered that these things have to happen. And as you know, I think you probably got sick of me hearing for years how it is such a detriment to not offer health at the high school. I literally could not understand it, and you've heard me say that many times, that there can't possibly be a scenario into which we speak to kids about health issues and we stop in eighth grade, and we have no opportunity to talk to them about things that actually are appropriate for high school-age kids, and we just hope for the best, you know, after eighth grade. So this is, this was a personal mission for me. I know it was more so for you, and we, with your support last year, we were able to add the .6 health teacher to the high school, and you supported that, the town supported that through a budget process, and low and behold, we actually were able to start offering health at the high school this September. So I couldn't be happier, and I couldn't be more pleased to introduce Ms. Janelle Iskern, who you know is our wellness department head, K through 12 now. And would you introduce our guest student?
Yes, this is Julia Dillon. She's a 10th grader, Julia Dillon. She's a 10th grader in one of my health classes. I'd like to thank you as well, especially coming from a district before that was not supportive of health and phys ed. It's nice to have support. Thank you. So this summer, CJ, Neely, Ellie Petrovic, John Gibbs, and I developed the health ed curriculum for ninth and 10th graders at the high school. We tried to develop a skills-based curriculum that incorporated a lot of hands-on activities so that kids could have real-world application of the things that they were learning. The 10th graders are finishing up the first semester right now. We're learning about reproduction right now, and then they'll all be certified in CPR by the American Heart Association.
That's great. That's awesome.
Yeah, our staff went at the end of last year and then had to continue over the summer to get the instructor certification, so they'll all be certified right in class. They'll have to pay $5 to get a card from the AHA, but they do sort of deal well, so that'll be nice. The students have responded wonderfully. I was hesitant, they got removed from study hall to go into health class, so kids really don't like being pulled out of study to have an additional class, but they've been interested and engaged in all of our lessons, which has been great. With the addition of health and with all the changes in food services this year, I feel like they're getting a clear message from everyone that health is important and it's a priority. So Julia's going to talk to you about one of the lessons that we did this semester.
One of the lessons we did was a reproductive life plan, which is, it basically asks us how we would feel if anything happened to us, like if we were having a child, or what would happen if, like, something horrible happened. So we all answered those in our own way, like...
You can read a couple of them.
Yeah. Like, one of them was, when I get older and reflect on life, what would I be most proud of? And I said, having a healthy, happy family, because everybody wants one of those. And another one was, of all things I would do in life, probably the most important thing would keep track of my health, because I like being healthy, and it wouldn't be fun to not be healthy. And another thing was, we had to add up the cost of having a baby, because we were learning about it in school. So we went to the lab, and we added up what pregnancy needs would be, the baby clothes, delivery needs, and everything, and to see how much it would be if we could ever afford a child at the age we are, and, oh, no, we can't.
I was fascinated by that. What figure did you come up with?
My partner and I came up with 16,826. And I was...
Just to have the baby?
Well, that's for everything.
For a year.
For a year.
Have the baby in for a year. Sixteen thousand?
Yeah.
For a year.
I know I would not be able to afford to have a child.
That's why parents call their children priceless.
Very good.
Well, that is a great exercise.
Yeah, it is.
Liz Holmes was supposed to be here tonight. She didn't make it. I'm not sure why. She was going to talk to you about activity that we did on nutrition. Actually, do you want to talk about it since you did this one too?
Is the microphone close enough to her just to make sure everyone at home?
Another thing we did was a nutrition and metabolism worksheet. So, we did our height, our weight and our age, and then we calculated everything. And then we did our active metabolic rate. So, it's the amount of calories you're burning a day. And then, on the back, we did a daily calorie intake. So, we had to calculate the number of calories that you'll need from fat, a carbohydrate and protein each day. And then the number of grams of each nutrient you need each day. And then, we did our fast food nutritional analysis.
I need that little section of.
You have a copy of it. You can do your own.
I'm afraid.
And we had to pick three fast food places. So, we did breakfast, lunch and dinner. And we found out that a lot of the food we eat, like Dunkin' Donuts, you can have a hundred and ninety calories in a coffee. So, all of us are not going to Dunkin' Donuts as much as we have. A bagel, just a plain bagel with nothing on it is three hundred and ten. So, we're learning that what we eat really isn't healthy for us, so we have to eat healthier.
Fabulous.
It's changed a lot of our minds about fast food.
I was really impressed by this, the breadth of the topics that are covered in the course. And clearly, I think it's sort of proof positive, like, these are all topics you wouldn't want us talking to your eighth graders about, but I think you would appreciate us talking to your high schoolers about. And I think that's how, you know, kids, being able to talk to other kids about what you're learning in class also helps because we know you don't always pay rapt attention to us as parents. So, you know, it's a really, it's really good for people with a professional background in the area to be able to provide this information and help parents more about it.
It is real-life application.
Yes.
You know, I mean, as you're saying, it's kind of transforming the way you think about, you know, who thinks Dunkin' Donuts maybe is fast food, right? A bagel or whatever. So, I mean, it's, I think that's, I think, really important that you guys walk away with being able to use, actually use the information that you're learning. And I know oftentimes, that's what I've heard from my children, you know, learning things that I'm not sure how I'm going to use. But certainly health and it's lifelong, right? So, it's impressive.
Are we going to extend this to eleventh and twelfth? This is just ninth and tenth at this point?
We, yes.
Are there any kind of offerings?
Well, we're not yet. I mean, we'd be happy to provide two years of health right now. I think that's a great first step. We'd have to look at what room there is, you know, in eleventh and twelfth. But I think, you know, we have to see if we feel we've covered all, everything we need relevant in time. I mean, if we can cover everything by the end of sophomore year. So, I know people are either watching or listening at home, so maybe I'll do a quick read of the topics so people have an idea because I just realized I have the paper in front of me. So, the grade nine health education scope and sequence includes the following topics: mental health, nutrition, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, reproduction and human sexuality, violence prevention. The grade ten health education scope and sequence includes the following topics: alcohol, drugs, mental health, emotional health, bullying, nutrition, human sexuality, CPR and first aid. So, all topics important to teenage life and they all have subtopics under them. So, I give the staff a lot of credit for developing this as a curriculum.
So, well, then you're required to take this?
They are required to take it.
Both freshmen and.
That's why I wondered about spreading it out.
It's required now for grade nine and ten.
Okay.
So, where they used to have directed study, they now have health.
Okay.
Any comments from our student reps, our regular student reps, Megan and Willie?
You don't have to. Just since we're on a student topic, I like to look over.
I know I took this class, but it sounds interesting. I like to use CPR certified, so.
Isn't that, we just think of the dozens of kids we'd be sending out to the community with CPR certification.
Actually, this raises a question. If an upperclassman is interested in taking that course and there is available room, is there a possibility of scheduling them in?
Yeah, if there's available room, I don't see why not. I know some, most of the sections are pretty full, but there are a few spots that probably could be filled.
That would be good if somebody like Megan was interested in.
I don't think we thought of that.
We can offer, I can look into offering an after-school CPR certification program too for students that are not in the tenth grade.
Oh, that would be fabulous.
Yeah.
That would take work.
That's right.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did a good job of it.
I just want to add some excitement for you. First of all, I can't imagine what it would be like not to have had this.
Yeah, that's.
So, Debbie, I understand your passion. Janelle, I love the curricular lessons you guys came up with.
Good, thank you.
It's not just, you know, a teacher at a whiteboard up front doing lecture, it sounds like. It sounds like it's kind of interesting topics. Is that true?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I mean, pretty, probably more interesting than you thought maybe it was going to be.
It definitely is.
And real world, right? Dunkin' Donuts costs and having a baby costs and metabolic rate. I don't think I want to see the lesson on that one either. So, I think this is true. Right on top of the new course presentation from Diane, I think this is really, really very, very cool. And I guess I'll just ask a question. Has it been awkward?
It's.
These are topics, right, that are hard sometimes? You guys know everything. You don't need us to tell you stuff, right?
It's hard, but it happens. We have to learn it. There's nothing we can do about it and it's going to happen to all of us. So, I feel like once we get over a certain part of it, we all understand that it's just going to happen.
I bet you give feedback, or I hope you give feedback to Ms. Erskine so she can.
We do.
Yeah. I think in reproduction, there's giggles. The first couple of classes, a lot of giggling going on, but it's okay. It's normal.
Some of it is funny. We have great students who really are quite mature, so let me figure out a way to discuss what they need to mature, right? And I, you know, this is another thing, we were a little vague on exactly when, but this is another course that used to be at Foxville High School ten-plus years ago that was also lost somewhere along the way. So, very important. We lost a couple of important things and we're getting them back.
Just to piggyback on Bruce's comment, I think this is fantastic. I think it's especially appropriate that ninth and tenth graders have it as they go forward into their upperclassmen years. And I was especially happy that the first topic in the grade nine curriculum is mental health. And the subtopics underneath it just seem so applicable to life as a young teenager: stress management, coping skills, time management, goal setting, resiliency, self-esteem, depression, suicide, mental health disorders, body image and eating disorders. I think it is so appropriate to be discussing those topics and such a need for it. I'm very, very happy that we have that in our curriculum today.
Yeah, we put those freshman year to start with. Coming into the high school is a stressful time for a lot of young kids. It's a big change and there's a lot going on. So, we thought it was good timing to help them manage that.
I think in the past, the biggest thumb in the block with reproductive and human sexuality was probably back when my kids were at school. A lot of parents just didn't want somebody else teaching their kids these programs. And I think parents, for the most part, had a tough time letting go. And having raised five kids, I think sometimes it's easier to talk to somebody else's kids versus your own. I think they're much more open sometimes and more receptive. I know in my practice, you know, I kind of think back and say, wow, you know, the things I say to these kids and the things I say to my own kids, it's two different things. So, I think your perspective and your attitude has a lot to do with it. So, I think parents have grown in a lot of ways and are much more receptive to allowing somebody else get in on this because the more people we have touching these children's lives, the better off we are. And I think, you know, we've all come to that agreement that more is better.
Yeah.
And less is harmful. So, you know, I think it's a good thing. We definitely have moved in the right direction.
Yeah, we've had great response too. We sent opt-out forms for reproduction, listing the specific topics that we'd be teaching home to all ninth and tenth grade students. And we've only received one opt-out form back, so.
And then, you know, sometimes when the parents, when the child comes back and says, I really want to be in that, then the parents kind of worry about it a little bit because it's, I don't know, it's tough letting go. It's all good.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Julia, nice job. You're very poised. Very impressed.
All right. Yeah. Food services update on recent federal regulation changes.
Yes, I think on the national level, they're finally getting tired of hearing the debate on food in general. So, the recent letter that's in your packet basically highlights, in one of the last paragraphs, the fact that they have basically set it up now so that we can exceed the old maximum limits as long as we meet the minimum limits. So, basically what that says is we have to meet the minimum nutritional requirements, the, you know, the protein levels and the carbs and everything else have to stay within at least the minimums. However, we can use good judgment in allowing it to be more than that. So.
Without having to buy a second lunch.
Without having to buy a second lunch. So, basically what we're going to be able to do and have been started already is to, you know, to start to adjust the meals back to a thing based on the individual coming through the line. So, it's a little bit more practical that way. And the guidelines basically tell the state that when they come in to audit us, they're not to penalize us for doing that. And that was the big part of that core. They could technically take our funding away if we didn't follow it. Now, they're saying, okay, meet the minimums, we're going to ease the maximums, use your judgment and be, you know, smart in that way. And then, they'll continue to morph, I think, their program as we go forward, but obviously.
It came a little sooner than we thought, actually. You know, we kept telling you, we were hoping that the public outcry across the entire country would be enough. I really didn't expect it till maybe the spring or next year. So, just for the benefit and the joy of the students, it says, the United States Department of Agriculture, Food and Nutrition Service says they're going to offer additional flexibility for compliance with weekly ranges. And it says, state agencies should consider any school food authority, like our school food service department, compliant with the component requirements for grains and meat or meat alternates, whatever those are. If the menu is compliant with the daily and weekly minimums for these two components, regardless of whether they've exceeded the maximums. So, the two things we're most concerned about, the portions being too small, which is the grains and the meats, they've loosened up on.
There's an article in the Globe and it was kind of, you read it and it was like with tongue in cheek. You know, usually, they don't change things unless they're kicking and screaming and dragging them along. So, they must have got a lot of input from people. A lot of people were pretty angry about it.
Highly unusual.
And you don't punish parents by making them pay for two meals. It's just, you can't. You just can't.
It's kind of ironic that the act that it was published under, I thought it was funny, was the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. And the portion sizes are so small, everyone's going home hungry. But anyway, I'm glad they have rectified that.
Just can't explain some things. But it is very unusual for the federal government to reverse anything within, you know, a long-range period. So, this little gift came a lot earlier than expected.
There is one other thing that Allison wanted me to pass along. She was successful in getting the grants for the smoothie machines for the high school level.
Oh, wow.
And so, those will be going into play if they're not already shortly. And that's basically, again, if we do it right with the offering, you can actually have a qualified meal because of what goes into the smoothie and what you add, you know, as side pieces to it. And again, we think, we hope that basically that will also attract, you know, kids into the different areas and to look at that as another alternative option that they like. Obviously, they like the salad bar. That's worked out very well for us. So, I applaud Allison and her efforts here and we'll be looking at, you know, the grants towards the salad bars in the lower levels as well as potentially the smoothie bar on the lower levels as we move this thing along and see how it acts.
She's already written the grants for those, hasn't she? So, we're just waiting for a response? What's is great about the smoothies?
Smoothies at the high school, did you say?
To start with, yeah.
And where do they, who provided the grants?
We've done grants so far with the.
Dairy Council.
Dairy Council was the, actually, the salad bar. And the smoothies is through, I think, the GO60, what is it?
Yeah.
Play sixty.
Play sixty, yeah.
That's it.
Program. And then, there's another one that's going to be through one of the other dairy-related funding sources. So, again, they're pretty unique in the way that they're set up as far as what they're offering. It's mostly, you know, equipment towards getting you to do things that would have you be able to put out healthy foods. So, that's why the salad bar was a perfect one, the smoothie machines, which aren't, you know, cheap. Because we're talking $2,000 worth of two machines. So, you know, it's an expensive thing that, you know, your payback may take a long time if you had to do it yourself, but if you can get it through a grant, you have a good option. Plus, it allows you to use some of the foods that are supplied by the USDA, vegetables, I mean, fruits and yogurts and stuff like that, which, you know, again, is another good use for it rather than just being in a sidecar type of thing, so.
Ironically enough, it promotes their commodities so they'd be foolish, foolish, not to put these machines up in light of what goes on in this country. Because a lot of people, there's a lot of waste when it comes to food. So, anywhere you can use it. But I think that's the spirit behind their generosity is that they're advocating to use their commodities.
Which is fine, whatever works.
This meeting just keeps getting better and better.
I know. It's a win-win.
We're ready to go back to high school, aren't we?
Oh, totally, totally.
Some of us are heading to high school soon. We'll just follow our kids.
But when the USDA puts it on the front page, you'll really have to.
The one other last thing was that, actually, Janelle left, but you know, and Allison have worked with the health classes and stuff, and they now have like a food council. And they're going to, again, they're rolling it out on the high school level to kind of understand how the whole thing will work. But basically, having the students participate in what are our offerings, what are, you know, the things they like or don't like, what can we do to promote things better. It was one of her charges when we first hired her that we wanted to do, and we wanted to do it on the parent level as well as on the student level. So, they're taking the opportunity to start with the student level and try to roll it out and get the input. And again, it will translate down to the middle school and potentially even to the And again, it will translate down to the middle school and potentially even to the lower levels on a more reduced way, obviously. But, you know, we're hoping that that's a successful program as well.
Right.
Are you offering your services, Megan and Molly, to this, to be tasters?
Try it out.
If you ever have a report you want, I try it myself.
Bill, I'm going to show my ignorance just a little bit on nutrition. So, the federal mandates work about helping cut obesity, right? Obviously, they must feel that by increasing grains and meats that that's not a big risk to what their initial objective was. Or have you heard any discussion as the Globe, did the Globe article talk about that?
Well, it has to do with, you know, somebody who's six foot three, you're not going to serve him the same amount of food that you serve to somebody who's five foot four. You know, the demands are different, and you just can't, you don't, I mean, if this person is at a healthy weight and active in sports and whatever, you can't maintain his integrity more than anything else. So, that's why you have to allow for different portions.
How does that work, Martha? Does that put our food service staff in the position of having to judge? Or is it just anybody?
Well, it does. It does to some degree.
It does. But, I think they also will deal with the individual student if the student says, you know, can I have a little bit more, whatever.
You're not going to say no to them.
Exactly. That's the way they're going to go. I think what's kind of ironic is you just heard the fact that they've gone through an entire study on how much does, you know, each one of these, calorie-wise, what do we get out of it type of thing. And yet, on the other side, for, as the example, a six-foot-four, you know, football player is going to burn X amount of calories, where somebody on a different, you know, metabolic level is going to burn a different amount of calories. And knowing that is also knowing how much food you can eat. And so, again, I think they're learning something that I think the government should have learned, was that there's a difference between, you know, the different sizes of people and the activities that they're doing and how much they can eat safely and efficiently.
I think the object is to fill you up and not fill you out. And I think there's a fine line, and you have to, you know, realize what it is. But, it's, you know, management of how much. But, certainly, you're not going to, I mean, my boys are over six feet tall, and if I put a plate in front of them that had a dab of this and a dab of that, they'd be like, "Okay, where's the rest of it?" You know, it just, you know, it just wouldn't work.
I just wondered who now manages that decision.
It's a judgment call on who's, I would think, who the server is.
Which it actually always was, in the past. I mean, they wouldn't fill every plate exactly the same.
Yeah.
You know, if someone's smaller is going through, but again, if someone asks for more, they'd give it to them.
They can do it now.
Right. So, now they have the right to do it.
So, it's not something we anticipate being a tough spot for our food service.
No, because, and the issue was, when it was set up prior to this notice coming out, was we got measured based on how much food we actually put out and how many meals we sold. Part of our requirement every single day is what was the recipe? How much grains and, you know, weight did you put out? How much did you put out in juices and fruits and stuff like that? And that's what we were measured on. So, if you were, you know, violating their laws, it would be very obvious because you'd be going through more food than you should be based on the number of meals that you serve. So, this makes that a little bit more practical in the sense of how it can be administered.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this? Ready to move on? All righty. District report card review. And this new format is...
Yes. So, just to remind the committee, we were here last month with our first draft of the district report card. And I just want to thank you all. We feel, Amy and I have been working on this. We felt we get some great feedback from you from both content and format. So, we did a few things. We took a lot of the data points out of the cover letter because it didn't occur to us, as Bruce pointed out, that people could just discard the letter quite easily and just save the district report card, which is a folded brochure. And so, it made so much sense to take the information, I mean, one of the, you know, that was in the letter, embedded in that. So, that was one big change. So, the letter ends up more introductory, what's the purpose of this, what kind of document this is. And the format will be the folded like this, but it's not the best copy. I want to make sure people know what that is. Because of the formatting and the way it prints out with the mailing thing over here, we're actually going to have this printed at a printer, still in black and white, but it just doesn't come out on our copier as sharp as we'd like it to. So, this is, I'll call it the mocked-up copy, that it won't be as gray in some of the areas that you see here because this is the best copier you can do. It's not a great deal of funds to have it printed in a professional way. So, the feedback on the formatting as well was terrific. So, I want to give all the credit for the formatting to Dr. Burdocks because she is the formatting genius. And what we did, we both have been working on the content quite vigorously, but she has quite a lot of skills in the formatting area. And what we, you know, as you pointed out before, we had different types of formatting pieces that looked a little bit different and maybe don't look as cohesive. So, she looked online, we looked them over together, we picked this format, and I personally loved it. So, as you can see, we've got a little bit better banners and colors at the top, a little bit more consistent format throughout the document, and it's still in the mailing. So, we would love to hear what you think about this. Our goal is really to send this out after the first of the year to all residents in Foxborough and not just parents, you know, everyone in the Foxborough community. I think this is great.
On the district report review, do we have to include the second?
The second. Where, Martha? How many students are eligible for free juice lunch?
Yeah. I think it's just a sensitive topic, and I don't know, is it, I don't know. I just, I'm very torn about putting that in the district review, especially where you name which schools or what percentage and stuff. I think that's something that should be in-house and shouldn't be. I don't know. I just think it's sensitive.
We looked at, I'll take whatever, if you act the will of the committee is, I mean, it's your document as much as it is ours. We looked at other district report cards and other things that people mailed out, and it was in every one of them. And I think that the reason is, this is not pointing to particular students necessarily or families. What it's saying is, we're trying to help the community understand the community and the kids and the challenges. And I think, to be honest, that this sort of thing surprises a lot of people. I think people see what you see in your neighborhoods and don't really realize that Foxborough is a typical community that has socioeconomic challenges as well as socioeconomic, you know, success stories. But, we do have some socioeconomic challenges, and I think that it's sort of a data point that helps define the community. That's why it's included. So, just as a helpful context.
Can I add one thing to that, too? I think it's not, you know, maybe as far as down to the school level, but I think it's very important. This is one of those areas that I think a lot of people who, you know, could take advantage of it don't because they don't really see it or understand it. And I think if they felt more comfortable that they wouldn't be the only ones doing it, that they might take advantage of it. You know, the reality is for us as a school district, it's not a negative. We obviously get more reimbursement from the federal government for the children that do participate in this program. And so, I think what, you know, what this has kind of turned out, you know, in the past is that it's very hard. We do a thing, an advertisement in the paper twice a year as we're required to do, but I don't think a lot of people would see it or understand it. So, if it does nothing more than to, you know, maybe ask, get someone to ask a question, I think it would be very helpful. And again, it's all very confidential. Nobody, especially with the new food service program, it's great because there literally is no difference between student A, B, or C that walks through that line. And nobody has any visual impact, which was different before. So, now it's a nice, clean system. So, I think it's just an opportunity to hopefully get some parents who maybe could use a little bit of a helping hand to understand that they obviously wouldn't be the onlys doing it.
I prefer to see it in because it gives the full picture of our community. I mean, people, most people are shocked when they find this out. And to have a full understanding of our community, I think we need to look at all the data points.
Would you want to include something in that box about confidentiality regarding the access, access of the free, whether you're eligible? I mean, because I think there may be a lot of people that don't understand that either, and that's the stigma or stops them from being able to gain access to this. And I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, there's a couple, we have to, I think it's important to try to remember, there's no right way to do this, but this, the purpose of this is to sort of show the community, remember, this is part of our strategic plan as they send the letter. So, I guess they weren't watching last May, I guess I should read maybe the letter, which is part of the purpose. So, for people who are watching at home, it says, "Dear members of the Foxborough community, attached you will find the 2012 Foxborough Public Schools District Report Card, a first-of-its-kind document that provides an overview of our local schools, which was created as part of a strategic plan approved by the Foxborough School Committee in May 2011. This district report card is a means of sharing important information about our public schools with all stakeholders in Foxborough." So, we go on to talk about how this is a way to engage the public and the community. We want to maintain strong public support for the schools, maintain our collaborative relationships, and focus on continuous improvement. So, this is a way for us to kind of get out the word to the entire community. What are we about? What defines our schools? What are we proud of? And I think that part of that really is to say, this is the way schools are. I don't think it's a bad thing that someone who might, you know, we have families who have some economic challenges, as many people across the country have had over the past, you know, economic decline over the past several years. I don't think it's a bad thing to say, gee, almost one in five families in Foxborough are economically challenged. We know that. And as to Bill's point, that I don't think this is a document to advertise like, please call us if you want more information, because this is not just going to parents. But, it's a way of saying, this is what it is. This is Foxborough. This is how many kids we have who have special education plans. This is how many kids we have who are qualified for juice lunch. This is how many kids we have at each school. So, it doesn't, it's a neutral, I think, data point. And if it does help families to say, you know, there's lots of other people in my book, maybe I will call and see if I'm eligible for that, great. But, that's not the reason for including it. It's just to give like an overview of who are we in this community, who are we in the schools, and what do we have that you might want to know about, and what are some options that we offer as schools? We also hope that, you know, this could be a document used by real estate agents who are trying to promote the value of the houses in Foxborough, can be used in a lot of different ways, or just to educate the community about us and who we are and what we believe in.
Could have a stack in your office.
I will have a stack in my office.
Absolutely.
General visitor area.
And also, right. I also think by, I mean, no confidentiality is being challenged by it. But, I think it also indicates that Foxborough is a community that cares. We are supporting everybody we can as to our best of our ability. I mean, I would need it as that. We're not leaving people out.
Like you said, you're framing it, it's information, you know? And I guess if anybody wants more information, obviously, they have the numbers on there that can contact. If they want more information about the specifics that are...
And if you go to the Department of Ed website and you look, like even there are tools that you look for other communities similar to us, these are the data points that they're looking for. So, they're looking for other schools where we're trying to figure out who we should, who we are sort of like, you know, we call them in-kind communities or like communities. It's size, it's socioeconomic profile, and it's special education profile. So, these are kind of the standard bearers, if you will, of school district profiles. That and MCAS results.
Debbie, I think it looks very good. Much further along than where I thought draft one, I'm sorry. Much further along than where I think we were up for the first draft. So, kudos to you guys. I think it's great. Just off the top of my head reactions, I think one of the, I think the Strategic Planning Committee that was formed that did some work for us, I think they would be very pleased with it. I think one thing that they and I, maybe the committee, might like would be, I don't think we can be afraid to point out areas where we can strive to improve as we go forward. And they'll vary from year to year depending on the economic times and how we're doing. So, one of the things that might be interesting to put in here, where possible and appropriate year-to-year comparison, you know, if we're going to make this an annual document, you know, where were we on MCAS results last year or SAT results or, I don't have predetermined ideas where, but maybe some year-to-year comparison might be interesting in relevant spots where you guys felt it was appropriate to share.
Okay, that's a new twist, so I'm going to have to think of it.
We've already done that, like if you know, as a teacher.
I'm thinking if this is, you know, if a parent reads this, right, and they say, okay, it's interesting that across all 17 MCAS tests, an average of 74% of students scored provision or advance, I'd be curious to say, are we going in the right direction? And I guess just in general, to me, this is a very good statistical document, and I think it does tell who we are. I don't know if it tells what direction we're headed. So, I just offer that as something to think about.
That would, that's a whole new twist that we would have to, you know, to get more information in here, I think would be tricky. It would, it may make it not as readable, it may make people not want to read it. We'd have to almost analyze it all like we do in the baselines and benchmarks and put in our trend statements. I don't know if, you know, that's a new one. I wasn't thinking of that.
Okay, well, you know what? And if I'm the only one on the committee who thinks that'd be interesting, then that's indicative. But, you know, or if it becomes unreadable, I think that.
Well, it's funny.
Jump in.
It's funny, Bruce, because actually, what I wanted to say is, I was on the Strategic Planning Working Group, and before you got going, I was going to say that this is exactly what I think we discussed in our meetings as being a snapshot of where the district is right now. I certainly understand where Bruce is coming from, and I think if we were to see improvement or lack thereof, that might be something that we would want to discuss or put forth to the community in the next district report card, because that's what a report card is. It's where are you right now, what's your grade? And I think this is fabulous. I actually didn't see the draft because I missed that meeting, but I, this is exactly what we talked about for the year that we spent meeting and discussing the strategic plan and the district report card and going through copious amounts of information. We discussed boiling it all down into just this, something someone could pick up and say, okay, what is the Foxborough Public School system all about? And it's right here in front of you.
Yeah, I remember. That's my recollection. It was a while ago, so it's taken us a while to get to this point, I will admit. But, I did remember to be a profile, a snapshot, those are the words that were used year-to-year. And I don't, you know, I think it's a, they're all good ideas. I think it's a question of which good ideas do we want to pluck out and focus on. And I think, my personal opinion, we have other vehicles for showing the public where we've made progress and where we haven't. And my recollection was, wasn't to recreate those vehicles and try to do it in here again or be redundant, that it really was a strategy for promoting. And I know some people don't like the word promoting, but promoting the Foxborough Public Schools and saying there are good things here that you would want to know about and not necessarily a progress, an academic progress report. But, because this is a, we've never had this kind of document where it's like all profile of everything about us.
I like it.
Is the MCAS on the website?
Yes.
All right. So, anybody who read this wants more information, I say it over and over, I think the most valuable thing is see what they're doing every year and see if they're progressing. You know, you don't want to compare this third grade to next year's third grade to last year's.
The strategic plans on the website.
Right. So, if the MCAS were on there, they can see that as their child is going along, that they are getting it, they are improving, and by the time they get to the high school, they've got it nailed. So, I think, to me, that's always been the most important thing. So, if you have this here and we have the website and all the information's on it, then certainly, maybe just put something, for more information, go to the website.
Well, that's what's on the back, on the letter. It's the last thing I said on the letter.
No, but I'm saying specifically for the MCAS.
You know what I'm struck by is that I think we have so much information. You know, of course, as school committee members, we have it because we've been living it, breathing it, and hearing about it. And I think we want, I'm getting the sense, some of these comments is, we want everybody else to be able to have this, you know, vast amount of information. But, again, getting back to what the focus is of what this is supposed to be, which is the snapshot. And I think, I really like it. I love the layout. And I think that people have access to all that information. All they need to do is get on the website, or they can pick up the phone, and they can call.
Ten pages long, you wouldn't read it.
However, this was a great, this was a great conversation because I remember we talked about putting the website in the letter and also having it in here, and I just realized it's not. So, we need a little something somewhere that says, for more information, go to, because you do know that, as you pointed out, they're going to throw away my letter, so, and keep this. So, maybe. So, we'll find a way to put that in here somewhere. So, we'll say exactly what it is for more information, to find out more about our public schools, or for more information, please go to our website.
Amy, I think you did a great job.
I think.
Actually, it's in your letter.
Yes, but we need it on the, what looks like the permanent brochure that...
Right at the top.
You know, worthy of framing.
Right at the bottom.
We'll figure it out. But, that is definitely missing on here, so. We did so much, cutting-edge genius, this girl, but we did so much moving everything around because I'm telling you, I want to thank you, we had great feedback, like put the, what kinds of things do you want to know? We put the childcare down, you know, the kindergarten, the little crayons, I mean, that was great, too. And data stuff over here. So, really, the feedback we got on the content and where the content was, really, I thought helped us to make it a much more readable and succinct document.
Do you need a motion for Martha, like a...
I think it would be great if you voted to approve the district report card with the addition of that, the website on there. And that way, we know that you're expecting us to go ahead.
Just before you motion that, let me take a risk at one other question. I love to surprise the superintendent.
What's it in color?
What'd you say?
Of course. Preferably blue and gold.
Oh, that would be...
It actually is. It actually is. It actually is.
But just not for us tonight, okay?
We're just going to have to price out, we're trying to price out the black and white versus the color version, so.
When you open it, once it's on the website, you'll see all the blue and gold.
Yes. Now, whether we print it, we're no promises about whether we're printing it in color or not.
It's expensive.
Yeah, so, we'll see.
Student teacher ratio, is that a meaningful metric these days?
If you ask me specifically about it at a certain level, the problem is, because it's, you can get that on the Department of Ed website pretty easily. I mean, it depends. If in different departments in the high school, it's all different. If you're trying to look at globally, the high school, you get one number, if you're looking, because all the support staff is included. So it could say the student-teacher ratio is 1 to 13, I mean, teacher-student ratio is 1 to 13. That doesn't mean there's 13 kids in every class. It counts special educator, support staff. So it's a misleading, not misleading, it's a factually correct but potentially misleading ratio.
The reason it pops into my mind is I know it's something we're proud of, you know, that the town has supported us well.
Right.
So I didn't know if that's another metric.
I mean, we could put in average class sizes and just kind of ballpark it for elementary, middle, and high school. That would be...
Again, just a thought I draw out there. Just a throw your curve ball, maybe.
We actually had it in our very first draft that you didn't even see, and we struggled with which exactly class, the average class size, we wanted. We felt it was a little loose number that wiggles around a little bit.
And if you guys think that it's not manageable or opens too many questions, that's fine.
We deleted it because we couldn't actually come up with it if, you know, because if...
It's a pride point, though, right?
I could say in the social studies department, it's this, in the science department, it's that.
If it varies, then it's hard to give a true accurate...
Think about it, encompasses everything. So at the high school, you have special education, separate programs that are very small, and that gets averaged in and...
One of the reasons in my mind, if you go back to the Realtor example of how to use this, that, I think that is a common question that a family might ask when they're located in Foxborough.
Yes.
So it's a meaningful metric. But is it one that we feel comfortable committing to this format? I'll leave that to you guys.
Possibly under the Did You Know section.
Possibly under the Did You Know, but we had it in there and took it out because we struggled with exactly...
We had a lot in there that we took out, believe it or not.
You have a lot in there, though, under the Did You Know. I think your point was the right one, though. We would love everybody to know.
But you know what? But that's a good point. I mean, sure, there's a lot we could put in here, but let's put in the stuff that's most relevant. And I would think that, if that's one that can be measurable, that's one that compares to me that might be one of the relevant measures. Anyway, enough said.
We'll try that.
I think it looks great. Like I said earlier, in case you forgot, I think it looks great.
I did get it.
Okay, motion of this. All right, so I'll make a motion to exempt with the addition of the website.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
So what will be our distribution plans? Have we gotten there yet?
We're going to mail them in January.
Mail in January.
To all postal patrons in a zip code of 02035.
Excellent.
So every household will get one?
Every household.
Great.
Whether you have children or not. So you know where your tax dollars are going.
And to our, how about to our business partners?
Oh, that'd be lovely. We'll make sure we do that.
And help us do a lot of this.
Yes.
And may I just add one other thing? I'd just like to thank Debbie Marcelonis at the same time.
Oh, good idea.
For all of the work that she has done, when it came down to all of the pages and how to put it into a package that could be mailed, she did a lot of brainstorming, and she's the one that we really deserve the credit for the mailing and how it came together in the end.
And finding the crayon thing, because it was a picture of a little girl, and I didn't think that was a good idea, because it would look like, it was a real girl, but it's not our real girl, so she went back and found crayons, so she's a good egg, yep.
She worked very hard for us.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes. Okay, well, we had a lot of first of its kinds. First of its kind, federal government reducing the guidelines, you know, flexing that first of its ever, what kind? First, back to the first, health courses, back to the first video production.
May I, may I do a little sidebar here? I've noticed that...
That's your meeting, Beth. You can do whatever you want.
It says underneath Foxborough School Committee, it says Chair. I actually like that, rather than going back and forth with Chairwoman, Chairman. It doesn't matter if it's a male or a female, this is the chair, whoever holds that position. And it came up, should it change on the diplomas? And we're just, it says Chairwoman right now because of Katie, so we're leaving that. But it would help, the next time we go to print all the graduation things, to just leave it Chair.
I will let them know that.
And actually, I just today, know the origin of this word Chair that became Chairman.
Really?
Yes. In olden times, they didn't have many rooms, so you might have your main room in the house with one chair where you all gathered to eat. And the table was up against the wall. So the table would come down, you would serve things, everybody, the man of the house or the head of the household would sit in the chair. Everybody else sat on the floor. If you had company and they were important, that person might sit in the chair. So for that meal, he was the chair man. And it came, the evolution came to mean the CEO, chairperson, or that's how Chairman came along. I like Chair.
Well, trivia tidbit. I'm glad you like Chair, because on the website, it does say Chairwoman, and I cross it out, so I'm glad you like it.
I actually would like it out on the...
I crossed it out, I thought it sounded awkward. Chair and vice-chair.
Right, I think it's appropriate.
So we'll fix it on the website, too.
I, thank you.
I was going to bring that up sometime along the way.
But I love words, because words, words have story. Okay, preliminary discussions of proposed FY14 budget.
Yes, so this is, as you know, an annual ritual where in December, we do the first presentation of our preliminary budget for the following fiscal year. So this is the FY14 preliminary budget. I want to start by thanking our school committee budget subcommittee members, who are Katie and Bruce, for a meeting with us individually and then collectively with Bill and myself to develop our budget philosophy and to answer a few questions we had about the development of our preliminary, preliminary budget. So obviously, as we have in the past, we'll go through a quick PowerPoint about the highlights and some of the things you'll see that are a little bit different, and then open it up for discussion and feedback from the committee. Okay. So just to put in a review, we hadn't had this before, but I decided to put in the school budget timeline, and you've seen this before in your packet. This is directed by our town finance director and town manager, where they give us a budget timeline. So this is, these were just the things in the budget timeline that pertain to the school budget. So some people are not as familiar with our budget timeline, may know that, may or may not know, that the first time that Bill and I had a chance to meet with the people from Town Hall about, we call it the Joint Administrative Leadership Meeting, just to get an early look at the budget process and what's happening on the fiscal side, it was November 14th. We then had our joint meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, to review the revenue forecast on the 27th of November. And then, in a short time turnaround, which is a little bit shorter this year than historically has been, we usually get a start in October, but we weren't able to have that meeting until November, so a little bit shorter for timeline. And the, our school budget request is actually due to the town finance director, typically the Friday of the first week in December, so that we're on the same timeline this year. So I think people are surprised at sometimes how short the actual budget season is, although you know we start months ahead, we're starting to talk about it and what things we see and how we, how the budget has gone the previous year. So internally, we do, you know, some work before that. Here we are on the 17th of December, it's our public presentation of the preliminary budget. And then you, as a committee, kind of undertake the debate and the discussion between now and the end of January. We do have two school committee meetings scheduled in January. We will put the FY14 budget on both meetings. So typically, what happens is after tonight, we have a discussion, you may want to go back and really look at it more in depth, and then we'll put it on the agenda again for the first meeting in January. Any remaining questions, we keep discussing them, and you keep your deliberations going in your, you know, in your sphere. And then we do have to publicly vote on the budget by the end of January, so the, what we call the public review and vote on the recommended budget will be on the 28th of January. Two days later, on the 30th, we go before the advisory committee to review our budget with them. And then at the May 13th, annual Town meeting is the final approval of this budget.
On the January 30th meeting, is there some way we can make arrangements to make sure that that's televised? Because all of our meetings are viewed by the public, and I think that's a very important meeting with the advisory committee, and I really strongly recommend that it be televised. I know they have the capability of doing it, because it's at Town Hall, we just have to make arrangements ahead of time, but I think the, I think the town needs to see the give and take with the advisory committee and what transpires in our presentation. So I think putting it on television would be a stellar idea.
That would be the first time.
Actually, we did have an advisory committee meeting televised last December when we had, no, actually, I don't think so, we had some discussion about the casino issue and...
Right, but it was with the selectmen, and they had advocated that it be televised.
It was an advisory committee meeting.
Right, right. But because we're appearing before them, and it's our school budget that we're presenting, it's just that we've always done things in a very open and public way, and I think this would be setting a great precedent doing something like that.
Yeah, but we've never, that's never been televised before.
No, I know it. I know.
It's been talked about, though. I think we've talked about it, you know, I remember when Chris was here, we talked about it, and never, never really moved forward, but...
But I think it's important.
I think to Martha's point, everything the school committee does is official business, including the Joint Revenue Forecast Meeting, is televised. So this is, that meeting is really the outlier in terms of school committee business, so. I don't know, is it appropriate? I guess I have to ask.
Well, that's why I'm asking now.
Do I make the request, or does the chair?
Well, I think probably you, Debbie, to the advisory committee, and also to make arrangements with cable.
I'd be happy to.
But I think it'd be great.
Okay. Okay, so this is one thing that's new this year. So we're going to be talking to you a little bit later about what's actually new in the budget, but one of the things that is new is to have a budget message. So as you remember, when you've gotten your, we call it the big budget book in the past, it's got the tabs, and you have the budget by section, by school, by department, but we've never really put a cover on it to say, you know, this is our budget message, this is where we're trying to go, and try to create a context for the big book and the big binder. So this is what we put together as our budget message, and so I am not sure if people can see it at home, but I'd be happy to give it a quick read and maybe leave out the details of the strategic plan. We're proposing a budget that maintains the same high level of educational services to the students in Foxborough while working within the same level of municipal funding and the Town budget framework. This philosophy is consistent with the historical financial approach of the town and its commitment to education. The proposed FY14 Foxborough Public Schools budget reflects the priorities of the Foxborough Public Schools strategic plan as identified by the plan's four broad objectives. And then we just bulleted those four broad objectives that people can find on the website along with the entire plan. Just generally, it's to offer a rigorous curriculum, to strengthen our school culture, to prepare students with skills for the 21st century by maximizing the use of educational technology, and to maintain strong support for public education. Those are the four broad objectives in the plan. The budget proposal maintains reasonable class sizes, preserves current programs and services to students, and takes steps to move the district's academic and strategic initiatives forward. Budget adjustments have been made to allocate funds more accurately. The proposed budget addresses growing needs such as the increased costs of new technology tools and solutions, which are critical to education in today's society. The budget also enables the district to meet new state mandates related to the management of student assessment data and educator evaluation. While the budget addresses several current challenges, it does not address all of the needs of the district. All right, so what is new in the school budget? So we have three things that are new, 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 as in new. The first is increased costs for network services, so fees, licenses, everything that we rely on technology for, which is pretty much everything nowadays. All of that is expanding due to increasingly more complex educational and data reporting requirements. So I would say, over the past year with the committee, you've heard about licenses for reporting on food services, so that, that's a license. You've heard about new data reporting requirements for student assessment. We briefly, one time, talked about how we communicate with the Department of Ed, and I've got that in here, we can talk about that more. We have more mandates for educational evaluation with our teachers. We've had lots of discussion here at the committee level with that. That requires online solutions for both communicating the information with the Department of Ed and for us internally to be able to carry out that process. So we've got many more fees, licenses, et cetera, than we had even just a few years ago. The second thing that's new is increased costs, no surprise, for technology software support. Again, the same, we now have a student assessment database, we have communications data collection system, so when you, when, you know, a couple of you are parents in the district, so you received messages from you over the weekend about the tragedy, and you received one this afternoon about everything went fine in school today. For parents, that's through a system that we use, Blackboard Connect, that's one license. When parents get the surveys about culture and climate through K-12 Insight that you've seen the reports for, which are quite complex, that's a license or fee. So all of those things that we now need to collect, all different kinds of data, not just student assessment data, but perception data and everything else that we rely on, and as well as many other supports for curriculum and instruction, all require additional technology, software support. The third what's new is the addition of a new, one new position called a district-wide, we're calling it Mobile Technology Database Specialist, to manage expanded school and district data and the deployment of new mobile technology tools such as iPads for students with disabilities and other innovative technologies. So when we think about where we need to expand, we really try to only go to critical needs. So last year, the position we put forward at this time in December was the health teacher, critical need. Our critical need this year is this new addition to the technology department. It's really unrealistic to think that we're going to add all these new technology tools and solutions and not address that it costs, you know, it costs us more man hours to manage it. So what we've really found, and this has even changed in a year, so if you remember last year, the one thing we had on our wish list that we typically develop in January, after you've heard this preliminary budget, last year, the one item on our wish list that we did not fulfill was the additional, we call it Technology Integration Specialist, which, you know, we've had Kerry Green here recently, another, we call it another Kerry. And just between last January and this fall, we have changed our minds, that we know we need more in technology support, but it's not exactly that job, that we still need that, but the priority has shifted to rather than, our biggest priority is really somebody to, more data management, we have only one person who does all of our data management, and we need another half a person. So that's why you see that this is kind of a, you know, a half and half job. The other thing is the mobile technologies. You've seen here at the committee that we're using innovative technologies such as iPads for students with disability. And we struggled this fall to roll out even 10 to 12 new iPads, because it's very labor intensive, we want the control of which apps are on, that they're our devices, they're not a personal device. And the management of that was really difficult this fall, even for a small number. And we're not even talking about districts that go to a one-on-one environment, and all of a sudden, you see a new high school's being built, and everybody's getting an iPad. I honestly don't know how they even manage the rollout of that. So for us, we only want to roll out those new technologies when we really feel there's a need. So you've seen that our pilots and our rollouts have been small and very targeted. Right now, they're targeted to special education, in particular populations even, not just general special education. So, but rolling out those new technologies really requires somebody to manage them. So we're really looking to add half a person to manage the mobile technology, especially as we go forward, hopefully to more mobile environments in the secondary schools, and that's not here yet, but we know it's coming, hopefully, and to add to our capacity to manage data. Another example, things you don't even hear about, is we had a recent, recent, it's a six-month project with the federal government, it's a civil rights data collection process that is quite labor-intensive, and we actually got the notification that it would be collected in the fall last March. We have two people working on it, it's Debbie Marcelonis in our office and Erica Scannell, who's our database specialist. And the two of them have been working on it solidly since March. Now, the fall, that window to start submitting pieces started in October, and as recently as of this morning, they're still sending emails saying, okay, you've gotten this far, and here's one more piece. It's an awful lot. So we have a lot of mandated data collections from the federal government and from our state government that are silent. In other words, we don't advertise them, we don't talk about it, even at this level. It's just things we have to do, it's on the list of things to do. So we really need another half a person to help us manage all of that. So those are the three things that are new in the budget that you see. Questions at this point? Shall I continue?
Yes.
So this next slide, we tried to separate what's really new, which is those three previous things, from what is driving some of our small incremental costs. So we do have increased costs of professional development. We are trying to send many more high school teachers to AP training. Whether or not they're going to be assigned to teach AP in the fall is not our goal. We used to have a very traditional approach, that if they were going to be teaching AP in the fall, they'd go to an institute in the summer, like a kind of a just-in-time approach to AP. And we know that AP training is really good for all students, whether, you know, all teachers that have AP training kind of approach their courses a little bit differently. So our, our goal is to get more teachers trained in AP instruction, which will help everything. So it, in the past, we have really not accounted for that anywhere in the budget. The cost of AP training is right up there, and we have not had this in a line item either in the high school or district-wide, ever. There's been no accounting for AP. So the way we've been able to do it in the past is kind of like piecing together a dollar here and a dollar there, whether we have a little money in the district side left, whether we have a little money in the high school side left, or whether you can get it from somewhere else. And it has been a little bit challenging. So this, so this increased cost for AP training, we have much greater need for both administrator and teacher technology training. We are continuing to provide ongoing training in all of the many complex components of the new Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System. We have done a lot of work realigning to the Common Core, and we, as we have been able to the past few years, but not really funded it ourselves, we would like to fund a course onsite in the district related to the realignment to the National Common Core Standards. It probably will be in the area of writing because all subjects have to write even more than they have before, and there's a lot of emphasis on nonfiction across the curriculum in the Common Core than ever was before, even more so than it even was in our Massachusetts standards. So it probably will be about that, but we need to really provide convenient, low-cost training for our teachers if we really expect them to, to realign. We have some small increases to the building-based professional development lines. So to give you a little bit of background on that, when Bill gets to, we'll give you a little bit more detail. But this is, our professional development budget has been, I'm just going to say, very small. So the high school has $5,000. Now, that's annual, and it includes all of the costs for the three administrators, if they want to go to their own professional conference, any teachers, and anything else that they need to do with high school. I can already tell you at this point in the year, it's gone at the high school. That number has not changed in at least 10 years, I think. I've never seen it, but it's not that this has been going up, it's been the same, at least since I got here five years ago, when I think I tracked back at the time, because I was really surprised how small it was. Middle school, same. They have more, a little bit more staff there because it's a little bit bigger, same $5,000. The elementary schools have $2,000, and that includes the principal going anywhere, teachers going anywhere. It's really very, very minute amounts. So what we're proposing, you see in the budget, is that we just go up by a little bit, an incremental cost, to give each elementary school just $1,000 more to $3,000 a year for all of their staff, including the principal. For the, for the middle school to just go up by $1,000. And then for the high school, if we attach to the 5,000, the cost of the AP training, which is about $7,000 just to send five people.
$7,000 to send five people.
Correct. So that, that's all, we're looking for an increase there for.
We paid for it, we didn't, they just went.
We, we put together money and we send one or two people every year, like try to cobble together enough to send the person. It's not, it's not a good plan that, it's not a good think-ahead plan, and, you know, I don't, I feel less comfortable when we don't plan ahead. I like to plan ahead, so. So those kinds of things. Now, it sounds like a lot, however, want to explain this as well as I can. All of those costs that I just finished discussing are going to be offset by the federal Title II-A grant. So to give people a succinct story about it, the Title II-A grant is actually called Improving Educator Quality. It is supposed to be used, the funding purpose is to improve the quality of educators and administrators in your district. It has been that way for almost 10 years or more. Before that, this particular funding source used to be called Class Size Reduction. So when it was, when it originated from the federal government, you could use it to hire a teacher to reduce your class size. So for example, if we had very large class sizes, let's just say, third grade at one of the elementary schools, you could use that grant, we only get about $50,000, so you could, maybe it's a little less now, you could only, you could hire a teacher to divide that large third grade section, those sections up to one more, add another classroom and divide them again so they'd be reasonable. That purpose for that grant went away a long time ago. And I, I know that because when I went to work in Stoughton in 2003, these new parameters for the grant were already in place, and Stoughton was already using it for improving educator quality and not for class size reduction. Foxborough continued to use it for class size reduction, almost under a grandfather-type clause that's in there somewhere, but never took the class size reduction position out of there and into the regular district budget. We are about to get a little, you know, no-no on that one. So we have to make a move to use the grant as it is properly intended. So what we're saying here with the offset is that because we have to take the teacher position, which is 40-something thousand dollars, out of the federal grant and put it in our regular district budget, which you're going to see coming up where it belongs, then we're going to not go up with our professional development that you would see in our regular, our regular funds, and we're going to use it for those real professional development needs, because those all fall into the category of improving educator and administrator quality. So it is a swap, if you will. So we're going to take the grant, take the position out of the grant where it should not be, put it in the regular budget, and take the professional development needs we have and put it in the grant.
Where that should be.
So there, things are where they should be. So that is a complicated explanation for doing things the right way, or the way we should be.
It's called fix it.
Because it really could happen, that when Amy goes to submit that grant next summer, they say, sorry, you haven't addressed this, and then we're stuck in August, or actually, it wasn't until September till we heard back about that grant this year. So the school could have already started next year and they say, sorry, you, you were told to stop using it for that purpose, which Foxborough never wanted to and never would, and they asked for a number of years and didn't. So it, it's either, you know, they could say, you can't, and then we're stuck with a position we have that we need to now find the, the financial space for. So as I said, I would prefer to plan for it in advance and just swap the things out and put them where they need to be. Did I explain that well enough?
Yes, very clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other things that are driving incremental costs, the wonderfully fabulous Sangare Active Science Program that you supported, K-5, does come with some recurring costs because they're real science experiments, so it uses up consumables, it uses up soil, it uses up the things that kids do and combust and implode and all the other nice things that happen in science. So there, it does come with a cost. So it's thankfully, not just a book that they open and read about science, it's real things that they use up, and we, there is a recurring cost for that. There is a need for an additional, one additional educational assistant, which is driven by a specific special education, individualized educational, education program, or IEP, not something we control. If it's mandating the IEP, we have to go up by one. We have very minor adjustments to fuel and gas, luckily. They're offset by utility savings in electricity, so that ends up kind of neutral. We have some increased costs of the college application process. They're going more and more to online submission of processes, and within the next couple of years, you're going to see all online submission. So there's an increased cost to that. Now, Bill can explain a little bit more when we get to that. We have, as you know, automated external defibrillators in all schools. Sometimes we have, we have many more at the high school, for example, of sports, but we have a few in each school and more in some. They require annual testing to be sure they're working properly and annual updating. We have never budgeted for that. We have had some years where they weren't tested and upgraded annually. We just did them all, thanks to Bill Yuvno who arrived and said, are we doing this? And I, and we had, kind of had one of those conversations about, oh my goodness, let's go ahead and do that. So, but we never budgeted for it, and I would, I don't think I'll get any argument that it is important to make sure that these devices work. So they're all absolutely up to speed now, thanks to Bill, and we want to make sure we do that. We have some increased costs for transportation of homeless students, that is a federal law under the McKinney-Vento Act, that if a child is considered homeless, let's say they went from here to Foxborough, from Foxborough elsewhere and are living, let's just say, a shelter or another residential situation, they have a right to attend the school where they were. So we share the cost of wherever the shelter is in the two districts, and they have a right to continue in school. Conversely, if there's a student who has been living in another district and is here homeless by whatever method, and there are many that, that students become homeless, then we share the cost with the sending district for that transportation. So as, along with the downturn in the economy, all districts have seen an increase in costs for transportation of homeless students. It's another one of those unfunded mandate things. And then last, we have some aging equipment in the music department that's important for us to replace.
Wait, do we know what the, you'll know what the aging equipment is?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We, we have an estimated cost for that.
Okay. I'm interested.
So in the interest of being transparent and letting the public know that, while it sounds like we have a lot of things that are new or there's incremental costs that are going up, we did not take the approach that we're going to just increase all the supply lines by a certain percentage, which is, I would say, a more traditional approach to say we're going, we have not gone up in supply lines. They have remained the same, at least in the five years I've been back here. And I think for a year or two before that, but that would require somebody else's collective memory. But I can tell you, in the five years I've been back here, we have never increased the supply lines at all. So rather than take the traditional approach, which is to sort of cross the board, say that, we've been very thoughtful about it, and we have only increased the supply lines that we really felt were needed. So you'll see that in professional development, you see that in the Sangare Science supplies in the schools. But we did not increase the other supply lines other than those specifically identified. So we're trying to just address where we really have a need for that, and otherwise we're going to make do. So this, this slide, what are some examples of district needs that are not requested in this budget, is really our attempt to communicate with the public that while we do have some new things in there that we feel are critical needs, we are not asking for everything we've identified as a need. So we also did not increase the textbook adoption line. We're going to wait a year or two and see how that's actually going with the, with the move toward more online textbooks expected. We're not sure if that's going to increase what they need, decrease our need. We're, we're sort of in limbo about that, so we thought best to let that sit in the amount that it's been for the last six or seven years and just wait and see and, and take a more cautious approach to that. We do not have a wireless or mobile environment at the high school or the middle school other than the one hotspot the students know they can get on in a library media center, and that's it. Even the high school principal does not have wireless down in her office. So we do want to take steps to move towards a one-to-one mobile environment. Now, when we say take some steps, that means high school first, middle school second, and we're not worried about the elementary schools at all. We don't think there's as great of a need there, nor I don't know if we'll ever decide to move in that direction. However, it is becoming quite common for high schools to have a mobile environment and to be wireless. So right now, Bill and Paul Bortolati, our technology director, are working on a plan for basically what is it going to take to make the high school a mobile environment? We will come back to you at some point this year with the plan, with the steps that need to be taken, what the barriers are, what the costs are, and we can have a discussion about a plan for how, how you think we can move ahead, even if it's baby steps. The next one, if you just read the first few words, that's not the intent. So it says inadequate number of computers at the Ahearn, that's, we do have plenty of computers at the Ahearn for what we use it for purposes. However, very recently, we were asked to submit to this Massachusetts Department of Education a real formal assessment of what is going to happen in a few years when the, you know, with the Common Core comes new assessments called the PARC. Remember, we discussed that at a previous meeting this fall. It's the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers called PARC Assessments. Those are going to replace MCAS starting in 2014, most of the MCAS tests. And that, those are going to be national assessments based on the Common Core, and the federal government intends to administer those online. So they asked us to assess basically three questions. How many computers do you have and where are they? Do you have enough computers and physical space to have all students in your school who will be taking those tests, to be able to take those tests in groups in a lab? You know, it's not a one, it's, it's a one-to-one test, but it has to be all kids brought to a lab. So for example, having two or three computers in a classroom at the Ahearn is not going to help. It's, it's large groups labs. And three, do you have enough personnel and staff to supervise the administration of those tests? So when we put together our data and sent it back, what came out of that is we're in good shape at the elementary schools, because really only third and fourth grade take it, we're okay. And, and under grade, is fourth going to be online? Okay, originally, it was saying fourth might be online. Third and fourth are still going to be paper and pencil at least for a while. So we're okay there, even though we had to submit an assessment of that. In the high school, we're okay because only the, you know, you don't take it all through your high school career, not all four grades will be taking it. It's really only the, it's going to be freshmen and sophomores. Well, not freshmen, it's only going to be sophomores, similar to MCAS, although we don't really know yet.
The junior year.
The junior year. So for.
Rather than sophomore or both sophomore and junior?
They're talking about the junior year, so they've completed, like in math, they've completed Algebra II, so it would be at the end their junior year.
Oh, that's why I'm still thinking sophomore year. So that, you remember how we just told you with it, where's going to be a new Common Core version of Algebra? So this, this is going, you're going to see big shifts in what you think the courses are offered and when they're offered at the high school. Science, the Common Core is about to come out in the spring, so right now, we have a science-specific Massachusetts exam in biology, which will continue until the PARC comes out. We don't really know what year that will be in. But because it's only basically one grade level at the high school, we're in good shape with high school. The problem is at the middle school, where all four grades will be taking multiple exams, English and math, online, and it's fifth through eighth grade. So we don't have an adequate number of computers at the Ahearn for what they're now saying we will need for capacity to be continued. We need more interactive whiteboards for the middle and high schools. We have 70% of the Ahearn have either an interactive whiteboard or a short throw projector. So actually, in many classrooms, we're okay with just a short throw projector that can be hooked up to your laptop or your computer because then it can, it can throw the content up there. We don't think every subject area necessarily needs the interactive whiteboard. It's very important, math and science, where things are manipulated and moved, less important in our estimation for English Language Arts and Social Studies. So those classes were outfitting with the projectors. So we're not saying we need interactive whiteboard in every class, but either one or the other or both are present in 70% of the classes, but 30% of the classrooms have neither. At the high school, only 46% of the classrooms are similarly outfitted. So we have a greater need at the high school to outfit them with projectors and/or interactive whiteboards. And some of the originals are already starting, have a little wear and tear. The Music Technology Lab at the Ahearn was new when the school was rebuilt, and as all music technology labs, it's now 13 years old. Everything's getting a little outdated in terms of the software. Bill developed an estimated cost. That is not requested in this budget either, but we're letting you know that's a need and it's out there for $38,000. Another, we just want to keep on the list, not that we have a, a short-term goal to go toward, but I, I feel like we, we need to say that we still don't offer free universal full-day kindergarten. Some districts do, some don't, a lot of tuition-based like us. So that remains the only tuition-based or fee-based thing that we offer, other than extended day and choice-type services. This is what I referenced a few minutes ago. One of the new acronyms in the last couple of years, from the federal government, the Department of Ed is SIF, S-I-F. It stands for School Interoperability Framework. And what it is, is the, the Department of Ed is going towards a new system which will expand their own ability to collect data from districts and allow the sharing of information back and forth to occur more efficiently and more smoothly and with fewer glitches. Right now, they're all kind of individual systems that get uploaded and sent, and it's, it's a little cumbersome right now on their end. So this is their requirement. All race-to-the-top districts must move toward a SIF system. The Department of Ed themselves are a teens behind their original timeline.
You know, who's going to pay for it? No, or else?
Well, it's, the interesting thing is, they said we could move, use some race-to-the-top money to start making our moves.
They make these demands and then.
Correct. So two years ago, my last year's assistants, who ran it, I put that in the, the goal for race-to-the-top, and then Amy put it in last year, and lo and behold, we couldn't even do it because they didn't do the work on their end. So that ended up having to be altered a little bit. So, but they're still saying it's going to be required for us, and we don't really know what the full cost will be or how much they intend to continue to support. But it is a requirement.
It's their initiative, I should think.
Right.
You know what, I think it's time that maybe we be in together as towns and, and get a little strength in numbers and saying, look, you know, this is a great idea, but you're mandating it, you know, put your money where your mouth is, and let's, let's find who's. Because you can't, there isn't a community around that keep, keep absorbing these costs from these mandates.
Right.
You can't, you just can't. And not strive to have other things innovated within the system.
It can be frustrating.
If we can't pay for supplies, for God's sakes, and they turn around and make us pay for this, I, I find that a little bit unnerving.
Well, then you're going to love the next bullet.
I think I mellowed it.
So the state requires, and I want to say that each one of these things is a good idea. And as they exist in silos, they seem like good ideas. But when all of them collectively descend on a district, capacity can be an issue, understatement. But what they're requiring is that all teachers are trained in strategies to teach second language learners, so students whose first language is not English. Now, this has been a requirement that's existed in the state for roughly 10 years-ish or so, maybe a little bit more. But they had a, a different system before where they had, it's called Shelton English Immersion, and they had four categories, Shelton, category one, two, three, four, and total was 80 hours of training. And what we're required to do, and were audited on, was whether we met minimum requirements. So what we did was we created, I'll call it like track for better word. So if a student whose first language is not English entered the borough school, then we had at least one teacher at each grade level, K-1, 2, 3, 4, that that child could follow up, that had some of the components of the training. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think we had one person who had all four categories of the training, because it's just so much, you can't say to a teacher, you know, you need 80 hours of training because we have a requirement. It was not a requirement for, for individual teachers, it was just a district requirement. So there's a, a complete disconnection between what we were mandated to do and no impetus for, and no money. So we, we actually met there, and in the middle school, we identified like one house, So, we, we actually met there, and in the middle school, we identified like one house, and in the high school, we tried to, to, to train a couple of English teachers, a couple of math, and maybe one science. It was kind of a school within a school, but we never quite made it to full implementation. Uh, but we are considered a low-incidence district. We don't have that many kids, we have a low incidence of second language. So, that has been a ten-year struggle, and we just made it to minimum. And now they've decided to throw out all that old training and come up with a new system that's now called RETELS, that's their acronym for it. So, we are getting all kinds of, um, advisories about our requirements for the RETELS and what group we're in and what, what year this will all be, um, coming down on our district. We are in cohort two of three. I'd rather be in cohort three, that stalls a little bit, but we're not, don't know why. I don't know how that, so we're, Amy and I are trying to get a lot of information, but I, I will say that it's, it's frustrating when you've worked so hard on, you know, a whole new system's coming in.
Yeah, but how do you pick which language? I mean, I-
No, it's not which language, it's, so, it's which, how do you teach in English someone who has a language acquisition challenge? So, what strategies do I have? I'll give, I'll-
You're not talking a foreign language?
No, no, no.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, so, I've got a student that just came, I'm a third-grade teacher. When I come back in January, I've got a child that arrived from a foreign country with very limited English. What strategies do I have to help that child learn content information? So, for example, um, environmental print is something, like labeling things in the classroom for little kids in English is important. Um, providing academic vocabulary and what's the most important academic vocabulary.
But that's our end, but how do you communicate with that child in a foreign language? You don't, you don't have, I mean, that's incredible.
No. It's not about communicating with the child in the native language, it's what strategies to help that child assimilate into an English classroom as soon as possible and absorb the content. So, it's actually more challenging for low-incidence districts, because when you're a bigger district, you may even be eligible for, for, it's called Title III. In my previous district, we had a Title III, it will pay for some, we had a whole cohort, it was like a department of, of ELL, English Language Learner Teachers, but we have a part-time. So, that's coming down. So, those things are all examples of district needs or incoming mandates that we have not addressed in the coming budget. So, don't want everybody to think that we just threw everything in. We have a, a whole laundry list of things that we did not. And this list is not inclusive of all school strategic initiatives that we have, that we may be able to find creative ways to meet, you know us. And it also doesn't include other staff positions that may be necessary to meet the strategic plan or student needs in the future. So, in terms of that, we are gonna do what we did last year, which I think the committee found helpful, and if you, if, if you didn't, let me know. But after this presentation, we go to work with our administrative team and we create that very short wish list. So, what are the four or five things that would be next in line, should more resources become available? And if you remember, last year, the first item on our list was an additional elementary math specialist, 'cause we had one, um, traveling to three schools. And so, we were able to add that, um, by the end of January, 'cause the revenue forecast between now and end of January did get better. And that was the first item on our list. So, now we have two people sharing three schools. Eventually, you will see, if I'm still standing, you probably at some point in time, I don't know when, I don't have any plans, you will see, hopefully, a request for a third, because we would like to just have one each school. So that if your child is struggling in math, or your child is able to be enriched or pushed or challenged in math, there is a math expert in the building that can help meet all the students' needs, but particularly the students on the two ends of the Common Core. Great. Well, the next slide. We usually have this in the PowerPoint that Bill's gonna take you through. We have more PowerPoint.
Yep.
Um, that he's gonna take you through in a minute, is in terms of where things really are in the budget. But we decided that if, if we really wanted to have a standalone budget message with an overview and context, that somebody would just take a few pieces and read, that we thought that this pie chart that everyone seems to know and love would be important. So, um, Bill added that to the end of my slides.
What's hard is the black and white, trying to decide what goes where.
I know, how come we didn't get color?
Oh, you didn't get-
No, we didn't, we didn't get color.
Oh, may I just hold up the color copy?
Can we get a copy?
We can get you a color copy.
Do we have?
'Cause it's really hard to decipher.
I know, I-
I was trying to match the grades.
I mean, there's gonna be a quiz, you know, so let me hold up for a few seconds, see which-
Actually, the one on the TV is better than the one that was up there. They got a better graph.
So, actually, let's put the color one back up for a minute and we can just-
Yeah, because I wanna-
We can just look at that pie chart for a minute before you-
Right. So, this, it's Central is twenty-four?
No, Special Education.
Special, Sped is twenty-four.
Maybe we should number them.
All right.
Yeah.
So, are you ready?
Yes, Sped is the first.
The fir-, the gold at the top, the twenty-four is Special Education.
One, two, three.
Is twenty-four.
Seven percent is Plan Operations. The Gray Transportation is three percent.
Three.
That's Transportation. Underneath that, at two percent, is Technology.
Athletics.
Underneath that, in the bright blue, two percent is Athletics. Underneath that, in the light-ish color, is Central Administration at three percent.
Central Administration is-
Yes. And then Instruction is the big blue section, fifty-nine percent.
Instruction, fifty-nine.
What's the three percent go to?
Central Administration. So, it does follow left to right. If you, if you start at the-
And Sped is twenty-four.
If you start at the three percent, Central Administration, down the bottom right, and go clockwise, you can follow the list.
Three, two, two. Central Administration is three, Instruction fifty-nine, Sped twenty-four. Oh, got it. Thank you.
Sorry for the lack of color, but I like to keep guessing. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Yugna, our budget expert, who's gonna take you through some of the, um, overviews of our budget in more specific detail. You notice when the rest of us doing presentations, he does the teaching for us, but when he does it, we just sit there and let him do that too.
He's so good at it.
All right. As, as Deb said, basically, this is, um, the methodology in which we, we pulled the whole thing, uh, together. So, uh, first of all, obviously, we're trying to maintain a current level of offerings. Uh, and actually, you know, what you heard tonight was that there are some additional, um, goals trying to be reached, but it's within, you know, most of the same staffing we have. Again, Amy and, and the staff has continued to do the curriculum reviews, and that's, you know, in there as far as how we would fund, uh, some of the changes that are maintained there. Uh, class sizes, we are looking at a consistent class size base, so, um, you know, what our kindergarten level up would be, we're not looking to shrink those or expand them, but stay in the same size range. Obviously, our special needs, uh, funding, um, is, is driven by the, uh, the IPs and the, the children we have in and out of district. So, we're, as best we can, estimating, uh, the changes that will occur in next year's budget. As you all know, some kids will age out, uh, some kids will graduate, um, and we'll get some, some new children moving into the district. So, it's not an exact science on that one, we have to do the best we can to estimate, but it tends to have significant cost factors, um, you know, as minor as being within a class structure within the schools to as, as much as a residential placement at a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you know, very, very big swings that we can have on that one. And then, as, as Deb, you know, said, on our, most of our supply accounts, um, you know, we've maintained those. What we have done, um, I think there was a philosophy in the past that basically left the money in the same accounts, uh, as it had been previous years, and as we go through the year, as you all know, you, you approve the, uh, budget summaries on a monthly basis, and there's transfers that are happening to make those things work. What I asked the, uh, the different department heads and, and principals to do is, let's actually put the money in the accounts that, that it's physically coming out of, so we can minimize the transfers. Plus, it's, it's more transparent, sort of, how is that money being spent? So, that's what we did, we aligned a number of things. You'll see that they're not big changes, uh, but again, the hope there is that they are, um, within the right account structure now. And then the, the changes, as Deb outlined, uh, in the technology needs, the AED testing, uh, the Singari consumables, uh, those are the ones that will be highlighted out, um, within each school as we move forward. As far as the, uh, you know, the process itself, as you know, um, it gets presented, um, basically through our principals, uh, back to us, and we do our, our first review on that. Uh, we look at anybody who's going to be retiring that we know of very early in the year at this point. Uh, we won't really get a lot of that, uh, until the springtime. Um, you know, we have people that are obviously looking at different, uh, choices right now. We can get some kind of heads up to that, but it's, it's never really certain until, uh, they make that final decision. Uh, so at this point, we know of one, uh, and we're including that. Uh, we don't know of any resignations. Obviously, that's, that tends to be a little bit, um, less known in the process. And then, to the best we can, we're, we're determining what our grants and revolving will be. Again, remember, we don't really apply for grants, uh, until the summertime and the, and, you know, late spring, summertime, so we don't really know what those numbers are, uh, as we're doing this budget process. So, what we try to do is, to the best we can, estimate where we will be with those. Uh, revolving accounts, uh, same type of thing. Uh, as you know, we have certain areas where we bring money in, uh, but we have to estimate that to the best we can on how we'll move forward and what the offsets will be against the different salaries and expense accounts, uh, how they can be used. The budget itself, um, twenty-nine million, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Um, and that's an increase of one million, one-hundred-seventy-three, one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, four-point-one-seven percent. Um, the original projection that we put into the town, uh, in the, in the initial discussions, uh, was a million four, uh, based on, again, not having the oppo-, the opportunity to look at our entire budget process and what we're doing, uh, 'cause that was needed much earlier in the, in the fall, uh, so they could kind of lay out where they thought the town's funding would be overall. So, uh, we're very pleased that we're under that, um, and not over that, and still hopefully accomplishing the goals that the, the committee has, uh, charged us with.
I think that's an important point that I just wanna repeat. So, when we give the town our preliminary placeholder, you know, we didn't go up to that. So, I think it's important to note that if we can come in under, we will, and that we don't go over that preliminary placeholder, because that's, as Bill said, they're trying to put the puzzle together at Town Hall. And it's really important that we all do our jobs to say preliminarily, when they're trying to balance out what's coming in and what they expect to have to, what they expect the, the total budget to be, that, um, I think Bill did a great job estimating that placeholder, um, and we did come in under it. So, I think that's important for people to remember.
I think when you look at this too, people have to understand that back in eleven and twelve, and back in ten, we, whoever was on this committee or wasn't, we were asked to bite the bullet at that point.
Yes.
Now, it's time for us to step up the plate and try to bring up some of these things that we've been having on the back burner. So, I don't want people to gas when they see it's up four percent compared to two-point-nine and one-point-five. There was a reason for that. Money was really tight and we, we battened down the hatches and we did what we had to do, but now it's time to, to play catch-up a little bit, and I think that's what people-
And includes the year when our, our employees were asked to take the zero and all those other years.
Right. The FY eleven is the zero year at the one-point-five-one.
Correct.
And the twelve is the split-split year, you know, year with the one-one. Uh, I mean, that's this year, actually, the one-one, but the, which is FY, this is, yeah, FY thirteen. Um, the difference on FY fourteen is the, uh, also, there's a somewhat of an issue when you think about the split, and that is that you have to annualize the full two percent, uh, when you go into your next year. So, whether we had any increase or not, you now have to annualize, uh, a split that came in January of, of this year, was coming here, um, that's gotta go for the whole year next year. Um, so that's part of the change there. But I think, you know, again, I think when you look at the, the process here, we do, um, we are in a negotiation year with, with, uh, most of our contracts having a factor there, so we do have a placeholder that we have to carry there, uh, as well. So, we're, we're, you know, compensating within this budget for everything, whether it's the, the one new position on the technology side, uh, whether it's the changes on steps and lanes that are coming forward and, and, uh, you know, the, the increase in the expenses, but also with the potential for the placeholder on the cohort. From an enrollment point of view, I, I changed this from what you've seen in the past a little bit. Two points that I kind of added, first of all, in FY thirteen, the year we're in today, uh, I showed what was originally projected and what your budget was based on, that was twenty-seven eighty-five. The actual's twenty-seven ninety-three, so we did see more students come in than we were basing our budget on by eight. The other thing I added was that lower line, uh, which is the, uh, out-of-district regular ed. Uh, this is your private schools, charter school, um, Southeast, um, you know, King Philip, I mean, I mean, Tri-County-
So, which one does it fall in? The charter schools and all that?
They're in that lowest line, the bottom.
Out of district, yeah.
And the reason I added this is the thing that's very important, that, you know, a lot of people talk about, we lose kids that, that go to these things, and, and that's a preference of families in most cases, it could be religious. But what, what this really shows you is that has stayed very consistent, um, you know, since two thousand and eight. And I think from, from our perspective, that means our student base has stayed very consistent. So, we're not seeing an upswing or downswing from choices being made as to where they're going. We're seeing strictly an upswing and a downswing to what our community is, um, in overall students.
On that thirteen, um, the twenty-seven ninety-three, were those kids who moved into town or kids that came back from the charter? How do you, how do you, how do you know that number?
I don't know.
I'd be interested in those.
Could be a combination of both.
Because that's money coming back to us for-
Well, the, the charter school actually has, has seen some ups and downs relative, because again, it's a, um, lottery-based system. So, one year you could end up with twelve, the other, next year you could end up with twenty, or it could be six. So, that's really kind of a hit or miss on that side. Um, we actually had a small year, um, last year, uh, the year before last, and this, this coming, uh, year that we're in today now, was, was actually a higher year. So, you, we're getting a cycle that's kind of coming through on us, but, um, again, I, I think that when you look at a lot of the enrollment data that I was looking at for the, the town, a lot of the time, we're trying to do it on birth rates and we're trying to estimate what's going out of here. Uh, the reality is our, our overall student base, again, staying very consistent, whether it's staying within the district or going out. So, our demands have stayed fairly consistent in that basis.
I mean, but you look around town, Bill, there's a lot of new empty houses.
Yeah.
And if they fill up, and they're big new empty houses. So, you know, the, the capability for them to bring in two or three children per family is, is real. And I think we, we, I, I think we have the space for them, but it's certainly, and you're gonna spread them out, so that's not too bad, but, um, I don't know.
As, as usual, there'll be additions to this package, uh, which will be coming out to you over the next week or so. One of the things that I just completed was, uh, one of the enrollment, um, views that I've been looking at, that I think will be important for you to look at. And what it shows is based on births and kindergarten, um, grades going across, whether it's our school or any of the private schools. Um, and over the last four years, if you did it based on birth rate, we've been running in the hunt, in about a hundred-and-twenty-seven percent of birth rate for the last four years consistently.[1633.14] And what that's telling you is basically, to your point, we're getting those move-ins. And it's starting to happen consistently, you know, for the last four years. So before that, we were running almost 100 percent on a basis. So we, for a long time, we've been in that 95 to 100 percent range, everything being very consistent to birth rate. Now it's going a different way. It's going to birth rate plus.
Birth rate is not a helpful predictor, we have found, in the last several years.
Right.
But it is going up.
It's definitely going up. It's going up consistently, which I'm sure for most people in the town, I mean, I can look at my own little neighborhood, and in my own neighborhood, six houses have turned over from retired people to people with families, and therefore, obviously, there's more kids that have come into the district just in my neighborhood. I'm sure that's happening across the town as people decide, you know, where they, you know, want to spend their older years, and whether it's, you know, in a more convenient over-50-type housing or something like that, which is freeing up these bigger houses, and people are obviously taking advantage.
You know, a lot of these bigger, older homes are going to be more accessible to young families, because it's not the price of a new, new home. It's an older home. So, you know, the value of those houses, they're beautiful old houses, but they don't have the price tag that some of the new development, you know. You might get the same bedroom space, and unfortunately, with bedrooms comes children.
Did you say unfortunate?
Well, for us.
I don't know.
Hey, I had five. I filled up my house, so I'm not worried about it.
It's a kid's book called Fortunately, Unfortunately.
You know, I have nine grandchildren, seven of which are now in the system, because my kids were fortunate enough to stay in town. So, you know, picked up a little steam on my side, but, you know, it is, I think the biggest problem or the biggest concern for this as a town should be the older, bigger homes, because the price is going to be more.
Call this the slattery effect.
That probably is, and I'm proud of it, Bruce.
Thinking of steam, that's what I mean.
I think just from a graphic point of view, what it shows you is, over the last couple of years, we're really auto-leveling off relative to our student population. If the trends in the past are anything to look at, we may actually be starting to be on the rebound.
Yeah.
Which, again, I would not be surprised to see. So, again, while we've been able to maintain our class sizes, and while we have seen a slight downturn in the population and the student base for the last few years, getting us to where we are today, it's never been enough to really be able to drop a section out of an area. Now what will happen, presumably, is obviously as we grow a few students here and there, hopefully, we can also maintain that for a short period of time within the class structure we have. So, you know, while you don't get the chance to drop real quick, you also don't get the chance to go up real quick if you get a student, you know, increase.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, if we see a drop or whatever, I don't want to see us close a school, because to try and reopen it is phenomenal.
Well, our schools are pretty much full.
No, 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 but I'm saying, remember, remember back when money was really tight, and we'd close down the Taylor School, and then to try and bring that school back up to where I think we're better off, you know, looking down the road if something like that ever happened.
Well, we're stuffed. We're out of classrooms, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at the borough, and the borough, basically, with the pre-K there, quite honestly, could use a couple of extra classrooms.
Really?
The Taylor is full, you know, so it's not like you've got extra classrooms there. What's really happened, and what most parents, and I think, community members don't realize, is that with the increase in technology throughout the system, and the demand for us to use that to teach the kids, that put a totally different stress on building space.
Yes.
So you didn't have tech labs in the past. You didn't have science labs that had technology bases to them. But while you still have to have the science lab, you have to have the technology-based science lab, which we do in our addition. You go into the elementaries, obviously, they can't have enough computers in each classroom, so they have to have labs. There was never a room for a computer lab.
Well, actually, there still isn't. So just in the last year or two, we were able to carve out a little space, you know, in the Taylor, to actually put more computers, so that an entire class could go and be on a computer at the same time. We just this year at the IGO took what was a therapeutic space, like, I'll call it a odd triangle of class out in that early, you know, not really a full classroom, and made that a full computer lab for the first time this year, and, or maybe it was last year, this is the second year, so that was last year. The borough does not have the space, so they still have their original 12 computers in a little tiny room, so the teachers have to take half the kids to the library, half to the computer lab, and then they swap. So the borough does not have the capacity to have 20 computers in a room yet. So, right. So our capacity is really in adding a few kids to each class, more than it is adding class says.
Would you ever consider redistricting at some point, if we get into that kind of crunch?
I don't think that's it, because we can't, you can't take a whole room full away. They only have two or three at each grade level.
No, you can't, but, you know, sometimes you will see that enrollment will, I mean, we have seen it, that enrollment will decrease at a school for whatever reason. And, you know, they've got 16 or 17 classrooms, United IGO with 22 and 25. So if you just redistrict a street.
You can, but it's not going to get us a room.
No.
Because you get a few kids from that neighborhood across the thing, so we, you know, we need to eventually, at some point, have a plan to get a room at the borough, so, for the 11.
And I think, at least my plan is, to present to the school committee, when we do present the borough, you know, plan overall, would be to have taken that into account.
Just think about the space a little bit differently and see what we think.
Reconfigure it.
From a staffing point of view, we've broken it down, elementary, middle school, and high school. So on the borough school, what you're going to see, basically, is, again, the full-day kindergarten has become very successful. So we're, you know, we've added a full-day kindergarten this year, which we expect to keep into next year. It wasn't budgeted this year, so that's why it looks like a position change.
It seems like a trend. We have not had a half-day kindergarten session at the borough now for two years. We'd only had a few, we had six families, basically, that wanted the half. So what we have done is, we've gotten creative, so we have three full-day sections at the borough, and the families who really want the half-day, they actually join the IGO, or this year, it's the.
Where they're offering it?
Is it still at the IGO?
Yeah, it's still at the IGO.
Yeah, it's still at the IGO. So I know last year, Michelle refers to them as the IGO six, the kids that went to the IGO for kindergarten, now they're back at the borough for first grade. And we really tracked their adjustment, and the transition pretty carefully, and it worked out great. So we just have more families there that really want to avail themselves of the fall, and we have been lucky enough to get everybody what they need. That's the only exception. So it just looks like we're on a trend for not enough families in the borough that really want a half-day class. That doesn't save us a room or gain us a room, because you have a room, whether it's a half-day section or a fall, it's still a kindergarten classroom. So it doesn't change our physical configuration, but it's nice to see that families are taking advantage of that opportunity. So it's a little bit of a logistical challenge for us to swing a bus by and pick up those kids, but it's worked out the best we could hope for.
That's what you have to do.
On the IGO, again, change in overall structure around the schools, we had a position that we have split to make it comparable to the other two elementaries, and we took half of a building secretary's position, and that's the half that we pushed to the athletic department this year to help us with the concussion policy and a lot of the other bookkeeping that has to be done now. So there's a negative to that side, and there's a negative on the Taylor side on a kindergarten assistant. Again, that's what we've moved to the borough. So overall, on the elementary level, there's a zero FTE.
Just a shift.
Change, it's a shift. As far as the middle school, no change at all. Going into the high school is where we have somewhat of our shift, again, that .5 that we added to the athletic secretary's position, was a brand-new position this year and is being fully utilized, with a lot of record keeping that, again, we didn't have the requirements before to deal with. And then, the guidance counselor shift is not really a new position. What had happened in the past was the, this position was a consulting position, not legally the way we should have been doing it from a payroll point of view. So we shifted it out of the expense line and moved it up into the salary line where it truly belonged. It's the same position, we didn't, you know, it's the same person, we haven't added or subtracted, but it didn't show up.
It's the college placement counselor, more accurately.
Right, and it didn't show up as an FTE before.
Why would you add it as an F?
Because of what?
I know you're doing that, but you're not.
It was never counted before.
But there's no money.
There's no money switched, no.
It was just never counted as a.
As an FTE.
It was, for some, I don't know, understand why, but it was listed as an expense but never counted in the salary or in the FTE. So in our interest of being more transparent with things where they really are and where they legally belong, it's a person who we employ, belongs in the salary, belongs noted in the FTEs.
I think it was just how it happened back then, and that's the way they put it.
Yeah.
Right. But, you know, you get a fresh look, and years later, you're thinking, oh, we really should put that where it really is.
And it has to be, I mean, it was, like I said, it was paid as a consultant, but it really, for the pension side of things, was really supposed to be paid as a salary, so that's why, again, we met the legal requirements of others as well, so we're in good shape. You know, the high school music program, we had a contractual requirement to, you know, have our department have, basically, have a .6 teaching schedule and a .4 department head position, who's been working more than that for years. And in fairness to not only him, but to the district as we move forward, we've corrected that, finally, this is the final stage to that, he will be a .4 department head next year and only carry the .6 load, which means down the road, if there is a change in that position, we are positioned the way we should.
You saw this last year, too, that we said we'd make a small adjustment each year and to get him right. So now, as of next September, his schedule will be contractually on par with other departments to bring it back to where it was.
Can we do something similar in Atlas?
No, it was this last year.
Was it there? Well, I think we took it away at one point, might have been before.
But you've seen this, this is, it's like .2, .2, so it's a little baby step, so that will be the last time you see it, because now his schedule will be what it should be.
And again, the technology specialist that Deb spoke of, for both the wireless environment as well as the database specialist. Our intent here is to get more and more wireless, obviously, to give the, not only the teachers, but the students, the opportunity to take advantage of that. One position on the high school level for an IEP, again, as Deb said, that's totally driven based on the students' needs, and we, you know, obviously have to honor that. So if you look at the overall staffing changes, the one new one is from the technology side, the .2 on the contractual side for music. The movement, which is strictly movement from expense to salary, of one position on the guidance side, the .5 extra on the full-day kindergarten, again, that's supported by tuition, so it's really financially in our sources, additional money that's coming into the district as well. And then the one, that's the IEP-driven expense, so 3.7 as far as what the budget will look like as additions, you know, one of those, obviously, being in a position that always existed.
Right.
But is there some way of, you know, classifying that so people don't think we're adding a position? Just, I know it says reclassification, we're existing position, but putting it under there that it's, we're only really adding 2.7 and not 3.7? Because, you know, when the advisor or somebody else looks at that, they're going to think we're adding 3.7.
I was thinking the same thing, Martha, and I was thinking net staff addition, that's the net staff addition, except how does it really translate into actual salaries? And that is what the adcom is going to be looking at.
Plus, we have the extra half-section of kindergarten now, because we had to put it in for this year based on, you know, what the parents want. So the only two things that are really new is the top one, the bottom one, one being IEP-driven, and the top one really being the new. So there's really only two.
Can't we list it differently, so that the advisory committee doesn't jump on that?
Maybe just make some revisions on that particular slide, just for clarity, because you may have prefaced that slide with all the information that explains, but this is what they're going to look at.
Yeah, I get it, totally get it.
Yeah.
You know, especially when you're looking at money on the town side and our side, and people notorious, no new hires, so I think you need to.
No new FTEs?
Yeah, well, no new hires.
Yeah, right, yeah, I know. That's kind of a way last year, though, to be honest, they added a couple positions.
Oh, I know they did, but I don't, I don't want somebody hanging their hat on this, saying that we've added 3.7 when we had.
So literally, we're only adding 2 points.
2.5.
And one is required by an IEP.
I wouldn't even say 2.5.
No, it's not 2.5.
It's not 2.5.
No, we have the extra half-section this year.
Correct, so it's really 2 points.
Correct.
So I just.
What is the mandate?
Just bold it on the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't even take the mandate out, so that's either an option.
Yeah, but you still have to show that that's where money's going, Bruce, so.
Right.
I understand, but when you rework.
Oh, absolutely. Well, you just put next with no choice.
What about that?
All right, we'll work on that.
Major components of the changes, as I said, on the salary side, it's $1,104,573, which is all-encompassing, including a projected amount for the COLA. Again, you know, think of the major components to that, steps, lanes relative to educational level, the shift in the 1.1 that's going to have to come forward, you know, the position changes, so all of that is incorporated in that salary line. And then the total changes that come across on the expense side are $134,000. And what you see just below that, which I think is extremely important, there really are three to four items that make up the bulk of that. As Deb said, the, using the grant as it's supposed to be used, is $41,000 towards the PD side. The Sangare system, really, is about $36,000. You know, that's really just the three in the elementary, there's actually another $3,000 on the middle school, so it's about $39,000 in total on the Sangare consumable side. And again, this is the current numbers, what we're really trying to work hard with, and Allison Mel is working on this, is to see if there's any way to get, you know, additional discounts or timing. But at this point, you know, until we see a little more clarity on that, you know, we're carrying the number that says what we have to. Again, the issue with the Sangare side, and the reason people haven't seen this in the past, is when this was acquired two years ago, the deal was that we actually acquired the consumables for the two-year cycle. So that's why it wasn't in the budget in this year and not accounted for. So it's not like it's something brand-new that way, but we're finally in the cycle where we have to pay.
Have to be really responsible for it.
Right.
You know, it's too bad, in some ways, that we didn't put it in there and put, you know, something around it that says, given to us for the program, so they knew that that was a cost that somehow was going to have to be picked up by us, you know, otherwise it looks like you're just dropping it in their lap. We understand that, but it's like, well, you didn't have it in there last year, well, because we didn't have to pay for it, so.
But, you know, I remember thinking the same thought this time last year. I think the extent to which you and Deb present all of this detail to us is a testament to how transparent you want to be with the public. But the reality is, we don't need to go through all this. The real message, again, in the budget is that, I don't know what percentage the 1.1 is, but it's salary-driven. It's a salary-driven.
Yeah.
So that's where our focus should be. I mean, it's great to see this one time, but I don't know how many people are going to question $35,000 of Sangare. I mean, the reality is, the budget increase is driven by the salary, again.
It is.
And, as you said earlier, if you look back at what we've asked our working groups to take the last year or two, it's not surprising that we have to expect, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes. And this is a year, you know, with the new evaluation system, there's more and more, I mean, it is really, people work really hard, there's a lot to do, more and more. It's not the same old job.
I mean, with regard to the Sangare system, I mean, Bruce makes a good point, I think, just talking about, I know we're talking about the budget, but we did go over the MCAS scores, and we have seen an increase in our science scores, and I think in large part due to this program, so you can argue that it's money well-spent.
Well, it's hands-on, and that's how kids learn.
Well, it's hands-on, and it's translating into results, into students really achieving higher in science, which is what we all hope for.
Exactly.
And we've seen it, not only in the MCAS scores, we've seen it when the students themselves have come.
They were so excited about it.
And that's more powerful than anything, I think.
But that was one of the best names.
That was, that was.
Agree.
Outside resources, you know, we're expecting a little bit more usage of our revolving. I'll be honest with you, I'm going to tell you right now that if we continue on the trend we're going, within four years, the revolvers will be very, very little if any. We've been using about $250,000 to $300,000 out of our tuition revolvers, we're not bringing in that kind of money. It was money that had been built up partly because of the Spoke Collaborative when it closed. And so we've been using that to fund the budget. I think, you know, I've heard comments when I talk to the other side of things relative to, you know, burning down these things, and I try to explain to them, if we don't do this on a very steady basis, it's going to be a very shocking environment to the town when we all sort of turn around and say, we need a half a million dollars more. So I'm trying to manage this, you know, through your support, on a way that I think the town can at least handle it over the next three to four years, and hopefully, we may get some other resources between now and then, so that it doesn't become as much of an issue. Grants, again, we think to be fairly consistent this year to next year. We've gotten some head side, that, you know, there might be some downward pressure on a few of them, but we're optimistic that we'll be close on this. The circuit breaker, I'm going to use a little bit more money of that going to next year, because we're coming out of last year, we got a little bit more, so I'm comfortable on that side of it. The circuit breaker is our only safety valve when it comes to the IEP and sped-related costs. And when I say a safety valve, because you never know when a student will move into the district that is that $200,000 student, and you have to fund it immediately. So the, having the circuit breaker account with some money in it allows you, and the big move on the state side has actually been talking about building stabilization accounts for school districts, because a lot of the school districts will spend every penny of it, and then the second that happens, they're in trouble. So I think we're being very conservative to, again, say, it's not that we're trying to hide the money, because it only has one use, can't use it for anything else, so that's pretty transparent itself. But what we're saying is, we're trying to protect the district. In the event that this happens, it can be absorbed without really affecting the educational program for all the kids. program for all the kids.
Bill, there's something about when kids move into our district, they either have to move in by a certain time for their money to travel with them. Otherwise, that money stays, they come, we own it. So I think people need to understand that also, that there is a timeline. So sometimes, we will get caught short.
We can also get caught in a year, which, again, I think many people don't understand, but depending on the needs of a student, we could have them in a program that, you know, might be one of the BICO programs, which is a very cost-effective program for us. But their needs have changed and shifted enough that we have to send them out of district further to another private program to support their needs. The transportation alone, when we go into those type of programs, is about $200 a day. So you're looking at another $27,000 to $30,000 a year just in transportation. And again, you know, when you take a number of kids that we have that we have to support this way, it can be very quick that a district gets in trouble. So I think, again, I think we've taken, I don't want to say conservative, we're obviously looking to spend more money out of these accounts next year than we're spending this year to try to support it, and again, to try to make it so that our increase to the town is controlled as we can possibly make it.
Bill, I just had a question. You talked about, not to veer off, but you talked about these other towns that don't manage their circuit breaker accounts as conservatively as we do, so they use the funds. Do those towns then have to go to the municipal side to get those appropriation of funding?
They've got one or two choices. They can cut their regular program to make it fit, because you're going to support the IEP requirements.
Right.
Or they can go back to the town.
Okay.
And most towns are not in a position to be turning around and giving large chunks of money back to the school districts mid-year, so...
I mean, but again, that kind of highlights how, you know, we...
Responsible, yeah.
Yeah, how we've been handling those accounts. And I think that people don't, you know, they may kind of just say, oh, they have these revolving accounts, and they have money in them, and, you know, I mean, I think...
Well, we don't have what we used to. Bill, what about the projections? The state saying they're going to come up with, you know, millions and millions of dollars in a shortfall, they're going to attack the circuit breaker, and they're going to track the transportation. How do you think that will impact us?
Jay Sullivan on the DES, he basically has said he thinks that he's got the funding on the circuit breaker side, so the circuit breaker right now...
Is that just big bravado at this point?
No, he's... Yeah, I think he's fairly comfortable that, for where we stand in FY13, that the circuit breaker is safe in FY14, and actually just realized that that's mislabeled, should say FY14 on the right side. But, you know, so I think the circuit breaker is fine. The cuts they're talking about on the general budget, if they truly do happen, while they sound like a lot, I think it was, you know, $150 million, when that translates down to a community like us, or actually, it might have been as much as $300 million, when it translates down to Foxborough, you know, we're talking about $100,000. And in discussions with Randy, based on the fact that we got more state aid this year than we had originally budgeted for across the board, you know, we could, that $100,000's an offset. We could basically survive it. So as much as we don't want to see any kind of reduction, because it obviously hurts us and the town side of things, it's manageable.
We got that in writing?
Yeah. It's manageable, at least at this point. So I think for FY13, we're okay. I think, again, FY14, you know...
Could be tight.
It could be very tight. But, you know, until someone gets the crystal ball on what the economy is going to do, it's a tough one. Again, the same chart that you saw previously, colors were a little different on my side.
I was going to say, like, colors, Bill.
Your background created a difference, so... The one thing I will point out, too, is that the real swing from this year to last year percentage-wise, there's only two that have changed. Last year, the general instruction was 58 percent, now it's up to 59 percent. So we're putting more money on the general instruction side. And the decrease actually came out of the plant operations, was 8 percent last year, now it's 7 percent this year. Other than that, all the other percentages are exactly the same.
Plant operations, meaning heat?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, we can feel it tonight.
It's not bad.
We're more efficient.
It does shut down at a certain time, so...
Oh, my God. But the way the town meeting was so funny, that's the first time I can see you with my coat on, for God's sake, without...
I know. Somebody said, "We appreciate the schools sending money on heat because we're freezing."
But at least I could see.
Yeah. I could see, great.
Next steps, you know, relative to the budget itself, obviously, not only will Amy Devlin and I continue to redo the budget with the administrative's team, but obviously, we expect that through the next couple of meetings, that you guys will do the same and challenge us in the different areas of what we're doing. We will continue to monitor the revenues with Randy and Kevin to see if there's any real changes. Unfortunately, at this point, as you know, there's a half a dozen points in the year as far as different budget cycles that come out, whether it's the governor's budget or, you know, legislative budget. So, and we never really get the final number until after we're done with the meeting, but we're monitoring this as closely as we can. And at this point, again, we're using the best numbers that Randy has, and I will say at this point, we are better off than we were last year, which was a negative number.
At this point?
That's very good.
It was a negative number last year at this time, it's a positive number so far this year. So even if there is some adjustments, at least the adjustments...
We can make it.
Right, sounds like there's something that's manageable. And again, that projection was based on us having a higher number than we're having, so two trends that basically should help us if the state economy goes down further and we lose some of our state funding.
What do you think the split's going to be between the town and us? Everybody always wants to have the split.
Well, you know, again, we don't really talk about split or deal with the split. We deal with, based on the needs of the schools and the town, and, you know, I think the conversation that we had with Tom Paul basically said that, you know, we're presenting is similar to what they're supposed to be looking at on their side. That being said, you know, as Bruce pointed out, our biggest thing is salaries. So we're going to drive a number to a certain level, but, you know, they've got some salary things that they're doing, too, that they're having to deal with. So, you know, I would expect it would be in the relative range of the same thing.
What do you think is going to happen with health insurance? We're going to see any savings, or...
Well, I think we have seen savings in FY13, and I think we will continue to see those savings in FY14. They go to the GIC program, which they've elected to do, but again, you know, will sure impact our negotiations to some degree. There's a savings to the employee, there's a savings to the town, and I think that...
I think Randy had that in it, around $300,000 next year we go with that, the town saves?
The town, what about us? Or just overall?
It's overall, because ours is in with theirs, so overall, that, the next move, that's about what he's projecting the savings to be.
Very much, I would be saying.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we did, you know, again, I think we've been trying to work extremely well with the town side this year. They, you know, when they presented their whole health insurance case, I think they did a very good job in pointing out that we had a number of employees who were on the higher-level plans, who really were getting no advantage out of it all. If they had gone to the next level down, not only would they have saved themselves a fair amount of money, they would have saved the community a fair amount of money, and in the end, gotten the exact same service. So when they brought that out to us, we met with every single one of our employees that was on the higher end, with a consultant who could actually pull up their information right in the system and show them, had they gone this way, here's what you would have had; had you gone this way, here's what you had; here's the cost differential to you that you would have saved if you had made the change. And to be honest with you, I think we went from about 47 employees on the higher-end plan down to like seven or eight. So the majority of them really did get it and dropped, and again, they're making, it's an advantage to them, but it also obviously was an advantage to the community.
So we actually did set up, I got to give really credit, like, individual appointments to really look at what they were spending and what they could be spending. And so I think that's a good demonstration on our part, how well we work with the town. So, you know, here's an issue, here's what would save both the employee and the town. So it just takes time and somebody willing to go forward with that.
Well, to sit down and do it, but, you know...
Rather than just wring your hand saying, there's some people with expensive plans that don't need it, they maybe not understand it. So this really, to me, was a benefit to the employee and a benefit to the town, and so I think we've really shown on a number of fronts that we can make things happen for the town that result in cost savings, that we can be responsible for those things and are willing to put the time and effort in.
What's ironic, when I first got on this committee, because I obviously work in healthcare and I work in an office and I see what the bill's at, I advocated a long time ago, we sit down with these people and show them what their plans are and what they're paying, because, you know, it doesn't pay, it's not cost-effective to have the Cadillac and a $5 copay and never go to the doctors every year. Just to say, well, I've got a PPO and I can go wherever I want, but you don't go. So, you know, it doesn't, so how much are you paying for that? How much are we paying for that? And you never go to the doctors because you want to keep your $5 copay. It's not cost-effective. It has run us into a huge hole, and I guess I'm just sitting back with tongue in cheek going, well, it's a long time coming, but... I said this a long time ago. I even advocated for the fact that, you know, pay now, pay later, lower the cost, set up a fund that would pay the copays of the deductibles, and if you have a great, healthy year, look at that chunk of money that the town gets to keep in a base, because you're not spending it. So there's a lot of heel-dragging and whatever back there.
There's been a lot of years of discussion of that, so just want people to know, we have doer people, as I say, who are willing to do the work and get it done to the benefit of everybody.
But people are really frightened by their healthcare card changes, and unfortunately, you have to pull out their file, show them how much they use, how much you cost them, and you really didn't get the bang for your buck this year.
And that's good customer service on both sides, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. But, you know, $300,000, $300,000.
And I think you're right, the one thing about health insurance is a very emotional...
Oh, absolutely, it's very personal.
You know, and it's, most people, I think, would have to admit that it's probably one of the areas that they least understand.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, thinking that they have the Cadillac program, you know, just makes them feel good, but the reality is, to your point, if they're not using it, you're just spending money. And you're spending your own as well as the town, so... Again, as far as the next steps, the, you know, school committee has two meetings between now and when you have to approve, so you've got the 7th and the 28th. Again, what I encourage is, any questions you have, if you can kind of get them forward to me, so if there's additional work that I need to do to analyze, you know, leave as much information as possible in those two meetings to make your deliberations successful, then that I would appreciate that. Again, we'll be meeting with, you know, the advisory committee, and actually, I'm sure we'll end up with a couple of meetings with them, to go over this and get this process through, and hopefully, by January 30th, it's a number that we can all agree to.
No, I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for working up at a really, we've got a great team, team effort, we put our heads together, figure out what we need to do, what we'd like to do, and we'll set aside, and we're trying to go, so...
Good job.
So anything, if your questions be now in the first meeting in January, get them to Bill, we'll come prepared to answer those, or if not, just continue the general discussion.
Thank you, Bill. Now, we need a school committee vote to authorize use of Foxborough High School renovation funds and building rental revolving account funds for the construction of the turf field and relocation of softball and baseball fields. Is this the wording that you...
No, I've actually, and if you don't mind, if Tina can read them, if I need to clarify them for her, I will, but...
Okay.
There's going to be four separate votes that you're going to want to take here. The first one basically just authorizes us to use the balance of the high school renovation funds.
One is use balance, all right.
And we're going to say balance and not an amount, because obviously, there is still some movement within the MSBA funds. It could be more or less than what we are hoping at from the town meeting side, so Randy and I both agree that we just say the balance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? 5-0-0.
The second one would be that, to move that the school committee authorize up to $75,000 from the building rental revolving account towards the development of the turf field and relocation of the baseball and softball fields.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? 5-0-0.
Third is to move that the school committee accept the approximately $60,000 raised by the Turfs Upfield Committee, along with the in-kind service donations of tree removal from TreeTech and the engineering services from Jim DeVallis and other members, to be used towards the development of the turf field and relocation of the baseball and softball field.
Your turn. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? 5-0-0.
And the final one is move that the school's committee accept the $200,000 grant from the NFL to be used towards the development of the turf field.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor? 5-0-0.
When would be the right time to send the craft organization a letter of thanks for their support in this project? Would that be appropriate at some point?
I think it's appropriate now.
I would agree with that.
We have just accepted the money, so now's a good time.
Do you want to take that?
That'd be...
Deb?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I think what was nice was the way the town came out. I think we all advocated from day one that it should be a town decision. Not because it took the onus off of us, but it just made a statement that we're here to represent you, and this is your money, and what do you want us to do with it? And I think they spoke, you know, there's people for it and against, and that's fine, but the people cannot vote for it, and I think we are in a...
Democratic way.
Absolutely.
It was the best, it was the best way to do that. And at the retired teachers' lunch the other day, of course, Mr. Rex, Bill Rex, is ecstatic about this, and the other retired teachers, thinking to have a full campus, they were very excited.
Oh, that's nice to hear, Mr. Rex, for that's wonderful.
Right, well, but nice that people who spent years...
Correct, yeah. I think, I think I certainly appreciate people who turned out, because I've always believed it's the right thing to do by the high school. And I think we all appreciated the fact that it's something you could have done, but chose to bring it before for the town, to really have the town either endorse it or not, or decide it's not the right time, which was, you know, obviously, the will of the people. But I think we also all appreciated the people who weren't for it at this time, not necessarily for the project, but felt it wasn't the right time, or felt that there were other priorities. And I think that's the glory of town meetings, everybody has a right to have their opinion. But I really do firmly believe that when that full campus is present, or even just the turf as it exists, but especially when the full campus, whenever that is, I think that even those people will really come to appreciate the fact that it really does complete the flagship, which the high school typically is in a community, and that they will see its use by the community and will realize why so many people were behind it. I think sometimes you might have some reluctance, but when you see it and you see the excitement that it causes and that way it brings people together, whether it's the high school community or whether it's the entire community, I think, you know, that even those people will say, this was a good thing.
Now, I keep thinking about Van Igo, and how he used to sit to my right, and I think if he was still sitting to my right, he would be very proud and very pleased that we were able to accomplish this, because I think it's probably something, and I'm only assuming, you know, but I think it's something that would really please him to see that we were able to accomplish, and the way we accomplished it. And I think he'd be very proud of all of us.
But always when they could, I mean, the Igo building, when it was built, was the high school, had fields beside it. The Ahern, when that was the high school, had...
It was my school.
Had, but you had the full car, you had the field right there, and I thought, in a way, it couldn't have started better with Joan Galavan standing up and say, "We wanted this in the 80s."
She made an eloquent argument.
It was, we couldn't have orchestrated it ourselves, and then...
It was an important, I mean, obviously, you never know how people are going to feel when they get up, but I think that historical perspective was really important, because to many people, this feels like a current, new, rushed idea that just arrived in the fall of 2012. So that was really important, to see that there has been an historical perspective, an historical will, if you will, of people to move forward on this, so...
I know, and then...
All in all...
People will think I'm a school committee junkie, but I can remember when they used to be on TV, and I remember them having discussions, and I remember Joan saying that, and I remember Vinnie advocating that, you know, it's something we need to think about. But, you know, money was tight, and you did what you had to do, but that was then, this is now, and it's, you know, you don't want missed opportunities, and this would have been a missed opportunity.
Absolutely.
And, you know, five years in that cost us twice as much money, so, you know, we can do this in increments, I think.
So actually, good segue, if people are wondering what the next step are, steps are, I'd be happy to tell you. Right after the new year, Caitlin, Bill, and I, and Diana Myers-Pacla are going to meet with all the coaches, want to get all of their input, what are they concerned about, what are the issues we need to know as we plan for the transition for all seasons, if, you know, I guess that's the way, best way to put it, all the sport seasons. And then we'll take that information and meet with Jim and the rec department and the other groups that are involved, and come up with a plan for it. the other groups that are involved, and come up with a plan for it. The work does have to be bid out, and we're not sure about what the turnaround time will be for bidding it out and having that come back, so a lot of it's dependent on other factors.
Don't we put the time a lot on the bidding process?
Well, we do, but the, again, because the services are being donated relative to the specs and design, I can't go out to bid until I have those. What I hope to do is meet with Jim and hopefully Tree Tech shortly, because I think I can get them started in the back to start prepping that area. And again, in winter, I think if it's a mild winter, it's a good time for them to do that kind of work, because a lot of times they have that available.
Oh, yeah.
And that's not bid-dependent, so.
You know, and looking back, remember when we did the Ahern School, and we took money and we had to revamp the field, because the crown wasn't right, and we had a lot of problems and stuff? You know, I, I sat on the committee then, and so did Paul Carroll, both our sons were seniors, and we both voted in favor of the high school football team being a road team that year, so it's not that I don't understand, I do, and I know there will be some concessions, and, and, you know, some people will be like, why are you doing this, or whatever, but, you know, I've taken that stand before, and it impacted my child. So, I think, you know, we all need to step up a little bit, and we'll make it, we'll make it work.
I think the advantages we have this time is that, again, if we can get going on the baseball and softball fields in the back...
Yeah.
Quickly, I think I can get the fields, those fields actually installed by late spring, which means they'd have a full year to grow, which is critical if you're going to make those things survive. The other thing is, with football, we still do have our football stadium, so the fact that we'd be ripping up part of the grounds out front here, you know, we still have a place to go, and we can use, and we still do have, you know, we've talked to, you know, some of the other, you know, the spots on the Pace and Road and things like that, where for a short time, if we need to, it's still in town, it's still a place, we can make this thing work, and it will take, as Deb said, just a fair amount of coordination, but I mean, I think we've done harder.
The end result is going to be phenomenal.
It is. Very exciting.
At the final part...
So, thank you to all those who came out to support it. Many, many thanks.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, school committee vote on subcommitting appointments. Martha, I know, I'd like to ask you, you're very concerned about teacher negotiations, and Bruce, would you be willing to be served on that?
Yeah, do it the last time. Yep.
Okay, we need to vote, is that acceptable?
We need a motion. Make a motion to appoint Martha and Bruce as the, on the teacher negotiations.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? 5-0-0. And the educational assistance, you need one or two?
One is, one is required, two is better?
Is fine. Katie, I believe, on the financial question, so is time commitment, so would you...
Whatever you need me to do, sure.
All right. Tina, would you like to do? All right, I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tina on the educational assistance negotiations.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? 5-0-0. And Tina and I will also, as a subcommittee, be meeting at the very beginning of January for the policies.
Oh, good Lord, yeah.
Again, and remember that...
There's a few that need attention.
Right, a few, but also remember, we received a packet of several that has just one word change in it.
Those are easy. That's the easy one.
No, but those are easy, I've already checked with Mass. We can read just the title, we do not have to read every single one at a time, if we read the title and the paragraph, and because we have already accepted all of those, we as a committee can vote to accept them that night after just one reading with the addition of just the one word. And the same thing could go with a...
I look forward to a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to witness an expedite of school committee policy.
Wouldn't that be wonderful? And the same, the same would, can happen, there were only a couple of cross-references and a couple of the others that have...
Just make it happen.
All right, well, we, we are doing it within our rights. Okay, other?
Everybody have a wonderful holiday.
Happy holidays.
I do have another, as I always do. I want to compliment the middle school drama club. A week ago Saturday, I went to their fall drama club production called Run for the Money. It's our drama directors, our two teachers at the middle school, Kate Hathaway and Tom Gill, and it was marvelous. The actors were wonderful, the students who did the set production, who did the technical support, it was fabulous, and the amount of dialogue they had to memorize was amazing, and they didn't miss a beat. So, compliments to Ms. Hathaway and Mr. Gill and all the drama club students at the school. And then the only last thing, you've got the Tims report and the other matters, so...
Very prominent.
I do, I know the Ahern School wants me to particularly mention this, the Tims study is called Trends in International Math and Science Study, and this is what you read about in the media very often, where all the countries in the world would participate in this international assessment of math and science achievement, and the United States obviously has entered, if you will, in the contest as a country, but a few states across the country choose to pay a little extra to have their results considered as a separate country almost, so Massachusetts is considered separately from the overall, you know, we're amalgamated with the internet, with the, all the states, but we, along with some other states, pay extra to be considered an independent entity for the purposes of reporting. So, long story short, Massachusetts eighth graders outperformed most countries on this highly-regarded international math and science exam. In the science part of the eighth grade test, Massachusetts scored second across the world, second only to Singapore, and in math, Massachusetts ranked fifth.
Retired for fifth.
We, we, retired for fifth, or we are fifth, well, anyway, we're behind only South Korea, Singapore, Chinese Taipei, and Hong Kong. 63 countries in all took the test. So, the press release and the Boston Globe article nicely sums up, that says, "The impressive showing on the Tims study, more commonly known as Bodeswell for Massachusetts, as it tries to build a larger, more sophisticated workforce in the sciences and the emerging technologies." And the quote from our commissioner, Mr. Chester, "We've known for quite a while that the best education in the United States has been happening in Massachusetts, but the Tims results show that our students are getting some of the best education in the world." So, in Massachusetts, 2,000 eighth graders from 56 randomly selected schools across the state took the exam. The Ahern School was one of them. We feel we contributed greatly to the wonderful showing in Massachusetts, and Massachusetts not only performed the United States as a whole, but we also outperformed all of the other states that took part as independent entities, including Minnesota, North Carolina, Indiana, Colorado, Connecticut, Florida, California, and Alabama. Enough said.
Excellent.
We must be doing something right.
Yes.
Happy holidays to all.
Right, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.